Good evening, residents of Deltona. At this time, I'm going to call this meeting into order for March 6, 2023. If we can, please have the city clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Burbank?
Here.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Here.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
Here.
Commissioner McCool?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Here.
Mayor Avila?
Here. Okay, at this time, we're going to go for approval of minutes of the regular commission meeting of February 20th, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Vice Mayor Bradford.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCool. Can we please vote? The motion passes seven to zero. So at this time, we're going to go to presentation, awards, and reports. And we're going to do our superstar student of the month certificate for February 2023. Yes, you guys can give it a big round of applause. So I'm going to ask the commission if we can... So let's go ahead and do the invocation of the pledge.
I was actually accepting the pause.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
So our singer actually hasn't been able to make it. So we're going to start off with our invocation and see if she doesn't show up. But I have a great idea. We all together can sing the National Anthem. Is everybody up for that? Awesome. And then, all right, Nick, please.
Did that. Oh, it worked. Look at that. See what you learned? I'm telling you, ever so much knowledge. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us here in the city of Deltona and this great crowd that we're seeing here tonight. Father God, I'm kind of believing that we've got something to do with some of the schools and the awards. How cool that is. We're really blessed because of that, Lord. It's fun to see our city show up and be here, especially with our commissioners and our mayor and our vice mayor and for all the city staff. Lord, we ask you right now to set them apart for tonight's meeting. Help them, Father God, in making judgment calls. Give them great wisdom and understanding and discernment, Father God. Help the group here that's here tonight, Lord God, to support all that takes place here for this beautiful city, Deltona. And may we grow in the likeness of what your son has showed us in living our lives together, each of us loving one another. We ask this all in the blessed name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, and all God's children and said, Amen.
All right, Nick, you want to start us off in this? We're going to all sing together. Ready?
I'm like the star, right? You ready?
We want to do the pledge. Thank you, Nick. We love you. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce, next time, you sing the National Anthem. All right. So at this time, we are going to move forward the super student of the month certificate. So I'm going to ask the commission if we can please all go to the floor.
Ray Lynn Walter, fifth grade.
Ray Lynn.
Ray Lynn Walter. Discovery Elementary. Discovery Elementary, Marion Estrada, fifth grade.
Yay, Marion! It's a great day to be a dragon.
Enterprise Elementary, Daniel. I apologize. Verdinkinko? Verdinkinko? Forest Lake Elementary, Maya DeVice.
You're a superstar.
Friendship Elementary, Sophia Moya. Pride Elementary, Kaylee McDaniel. Spirit Elementary, Giovanni Rosa. Sunrise Elementary, Josephine Hanson. Timbercrest Elementary. Armonte Myrie. Volusia Pines Elementary, Aubryn Frazier. Deltona Middle, Ariella Andre. Galaxy Middle. Sierra Johnson. Sierra Johnson, please. Heritage Middle, Kaylee Rodriguez. Deltona High School, Adewala Orgade. Pine Ridge High School, Shadé Diaz. Volusia Pines Elementary, Aubryn Frazier. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to ask our Deltona Women's Club to come up.
Deltona Women's Club.
Deltona Women's Club, come on down. Right? You guys can come right here. So this is actually our Deltona Women's Club, but this is actually Women's History Month. So as much as I love these women for what they do at the Women's Club, how about all of our women stand up?
Yes!
All right. That's right. The women, I want you to join them, but I don't know if y'all want to come up here or not. But you know, the men know that without all of us women... Right, you stand back there. You know, a lot of things may and may not get done. So, you know, we need you as much as you need us. But we're going to read this. I'm going to split it. I guess, you know, you want to read it? Okay, I'll let Commissioner McCool. I'm blind.
Yes, you may. "We're doing it for the sisters. Whereas every year, March is designated as Women's History Month by presidential proclamation to honor women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on the often overlooked contributions of women to United States history, and whereas Women's History Month grew out of a week-long celebration of women's contributions to culture, history, and society organized by the school district of Sonoma, California in 1978, whereas the movement spread across the country as other communities initiated their own Women's History Week celebrations." And, Commissioner?
Right there. Where are we? Right there.
This one here?
Yep.
"Whereas in 1980, the National Women's History Alliance successfully lobbied for national recognition, and whereas..." Oh, no, wait, not you. "And whereas, in February 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th as National Women's History Week. And whereas, in March 1987, Congress passed public law 100-9, designating March as Women's History Month. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city commissioner of Deltona, Florida, do hereby recognize March as Women's History Month." "With its 2023 theme, celebrating women who tell our stories as a tribute to the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history, executed the sixth-day march 2023, Santiago Avila, Junior Mayor."
"The Deltona Women's Club has provided aid and service to the Deltona community for 60 years. Some of the things we've accomplished over these 60 years, just a few. We've adopted the Discovery Elementary School about 10 years ago." "We've held school supply drives, underwear and sock drives, whatever they need for help. We've tried to be of help to that school that is in such need, and we're happy to do it. It's just in our nature. We've collected even during the pandemic and our building in disrepair, we managed to collect $1,000 that we sent to Ukraine in helping them. We sent it to the food guy, what's his name? Juan, you know, the kitchen? Yes, that's who got the money." Okay. "We provide three scholarships every year. We've helped in school drives. And just so you know, once our building is finished and repaired, because it's a mess right now, we realize that. The pandemic kind of put us out of business, and time still marched on and ravaged our building, and so it's not in very good shape. But it's about to be fixed, and when it is, we are going to hold a grand gala opening. So keep your eye out for that." Okay. "On behalf of our current devoted women and the hundreds of members on whose shoulders we stand, we thank the city for this honor. We're small, but we're mighty, and we're looking to grow. So if you know anyone interested, just let us know." Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for all you guys.
So before the two principals leave, I want to take a minute just to recognize, folks, we had the Pine Ridge High School and the Deltona High School principals here. So let me tell you. These two principals have been knocking it out of the roof. It's very easy to be a mayor when their schools are doing astounding things. So thank you, guys. All right, at this time, we're going to start proceeding towards public forum. So I'm going to ask for the public that's going, if you can please have your conversations outside of the chambers. We would greatly appreciate it. Also, a small recognition, we have our county councilman that is continuing to spoil us with his presence. So thank you, David, for being here. We don't get very many county visitors, so thank you. He has. All right. City clerk, can we please start public comment?
Beeta Styes Palaz, Douglas McDonald, Pedro Rosario, Richard Bellick, Albert Bryan, Kathy Bryan. Beeta Styes Palaz, please. Beeta Styes Palaz. Douglas McDonald, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Doug McDonald at 1494 Suri Run Court here in Deltona. And I want to address a few comments tonight to an article that just appeared in The Beacon. I'm late to the party. I did not know anything about this. We have a city commissioner who has now been censured by the commission for comments that he made to a private citizen. So I commend the commission for at least taking this step of providing a censure. This is something I've been looking for, for 25 years, over the years. Some of the attitude and conduct was a lot worse than what this gentleman did, and they escaped that censure. But now I see it's come home. So I appreciate all that you did to do that. And I'm just saying that if this is all true, this is in the public domain, by the way. It's not something I'm making up. If it's all true, it's just shameful. It's just misconduct to think that a city commissioner would talk to a resident in this manner. So, but I'm glad to see that something is done about it. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Pedro Rosario, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here representing Post 255 American Legion. Every year, we have an annual luncheon to honor our first responders for their outstanding work and selfish heroism that they do. And I want to remind the commissioners and the mayor of our function. I've received RSVPs for at least four. I'm looking forward to receiving the rest, whether you can make it or not. Please RSVP me. And that's what I'm here for, just to remind that these people deserve our attention and these ceremonies, and I'd love to see everybody, including our councilmen and all those who are listening to my voice, to show up at the Tona Regional Library, 2150 Eustis, 10:00 to 2:00, April 14th, on Friday. That's all I got. And I forgot one invitation, and I apologize. It's for city manager, Mr. James Chisholm. Excuse me. That's all I had.
Thank you, Pedro.
Richard Bellick, please.
I'm here to speak about the hiring of the new attorney, a new attorney. Let's not keep going backwards, Deltona. We're rehashing old people that have been chased here, chased there, fired. Don't help the people. The last storm, Marsha DeGeorge, was unheard of. No residents could get in touch with her. She did the same thing in Fort Pierce. She got chased out of there. She's coming in now telling you, she can do everything for $300,000 a year. She can do everything. She can do everything but answer the phone. People needed her. She wasn't there for them. What do you want to do? This is what you want to do to the people? What is she... Does she use favors or something? I mean, does she got something on you? Are you scared maybe she could open a closet and skeletons will come out? Come on, you just got to do something here. You can't keep doing this now. This is insanity. The same people, the same results for them. Zero they get. They get nothing. They pay taxes, they pay your salary, and they pay an exorbitant salary to that law firm that we have now. Over a million dollars a year. When's it going to stop? You came here with promises. You were going to ask for an audit. Yeah, what'd you do? Ask for a six-month orders? You ain't been here six months. We want an audit. We want to know where the money went. Who took the money? It's gone. How long can you play stupid? You got to... People have to come up here, and they're supposed to admire you. They don't admire you. They get distaste. An audit. You said it, you said it, and you said it. When is it going to ask? Are you scared? I'm asking for you. They want to ask for an audit. Caldwell Starozak and Bouchard or whatever his name is, they want an audit, okay? When is it going to make a motion to get an audit? The money's been gone, been misused. People have made fortunes here in Deltona. I'm not saying used. I know you's poorly paid and stuff. But when is it going to do something? Give the people, at least give the people some respect and show them, where did your money go? Here's where your money went. X amount went here, this went here, that went there. Are you really that scared? I thought you was one men. That's why I pushed for yous to be up there. Now prove me wrong. Prove that you're a man. I got to come up here and argue with you and make money and make enemies for the right thing. I'm saying the right thing. You's are doing the wrong thing, and it's constant. You've had commissioners here for years. Deltona's went nowhere, nowhere. They got abused and used, and they got called names on top of that. Now what are yous doing? I mean, you ruin people's appetites. I mean, really, people look at yous and yous are a joke. Yous are a joke. And if yous don't like it, that's too bad. That's what yous are. Oh, we'll call for an audit, we'll call for an audit. Then you come out with a lame-brained thing, oh, six-month orders. You ain't even been there six months. Come on. Start fresh. It's a new broom. Sweep clean. Get rid of the city attorney. Get a good manager. I'm not saying he's bad. I'm not saying that. He's been around the horn 35, 40 times. Get somebody permanent. Yous are going to go through all this again next year.
Robert Trumbett, please.
Robert Trumbett from Golden Arm in Deltona. By the way, I'm speaking for myself, not for any group that I happen to be a part of. I'm going to read this. "I'm here to make a few points. First, I would like to thank Commissioner Burbank for his apology. I personally, as a gay man, can see how many people would find offensive, find things that were offensive with his comments. The apology was absolutely necessary. I listened to the comments of the audience and heard several heartfelt concerns." and heard several heartfelt concerns. But one commentator and the mayor came up short, in my humble opinion. Most of the times, Commissioner McCool and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of topics. But I think we probably do agree on one thing. We both have strong concerns about our governor. Our governor is really the most overtly homophobic governor in this century, in the past century, probably. It has been reported that gay families are not considering moving out of the state because of his and the, and Tallahassee actions. School librarians are forced to remove any books that discuss gay issues. Now, I hear that they may take away transgender kids from their parents. And yet, not a word from, yes, one of the self-proclaimed, one of the people back here who talked about it, the president of the HOA and our mayor. No, no condemnation at all. The sad thing is that these are acts, not words. These acts are actually negatively impacting the Florida LGBTQ plus community, especially gay youth. You would think that people that are so outraged by the words of an ordinary city commissioner would go ballistic on this governor. Well, one would be wrong if you thought that. Our mayor took one of his friends, the HOA president, with him to Tallahassee to honor and congratulate the governor, to praise the governor, to take pictures of the most homophobic governor in Florida history. I'm sorry that Tom's words offended these individuals. But calling for a recall while kissing the homophobic governors behind reeks of hypocrisy and political opportunism at its worst. Many of us grew up, many of us grew up hearing, "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but names will never hurt me." Names aren't going to hurt you. But these acts are hurting people right now. So the second point I'd like to make is, I want to address the mayor's conduct in these meetings. I watched as you let person after person deflect direct attacks or conversations, especially towards Mr. Burbank, without following the rules. Once you said, once I heard you say, "We need decorum," and here's what you said. "I know a lot of us are upset with what happened in the past, and I get it 100%, but blah, 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 blah." That's a joke. That's an absolute joke. I listened to the last workshop and people were walking back there yelling things. People were making comments out loud. You couldn't, you can't hear? When, when is this going to change? I'll tell you what, you're going to have chaos in this place if you don't start taking your gavel and using it fairly. Stopping everybody, stopping people from talking in the back of the room where people on the, on here can't hear you speak.
Albert Bryant, please.
Evening, you know? Last Monday night, we had a workshop. It was actually a barely okay workshop for the most part. You let the people speak. You actually told people in the back room that they needed to quiet down so we could hear. But at the very end of the meeting, a man that's not even a charter officer yet, but he's sitting in that chair, made some comments about how people talk from this podium and how that influences developers. No, I disagree with that. And I'll tell you why. Because if you look at the video for the past five years, we've had commissioners up there call one another drunks. We've had commissioners up there basically cuss each other out from the dais. That tells you more about this city than anything that anybody back here says from this podium. So he can sit over here and write, take notes, whatever he's doing, not pay attention like normal. I don't care anymore because we're going to go to a different position from now on. Because he's challenged me now. And, you know, you shouldn't challenge me. You really shouldn't. Because when you challenge me, things go to a different level. A completely different level. So he said at one point in time that the language up here influences a lot of stuff in the city. I disagree. The language up here has nothing to do with what goes on in the city. You know why? Because probably about 75% of every resident in this city goes somewhere else to work. They go to Orlando, they go to Sanford, they go to Daytona Beach. They don't work here. Why is that? Because this commission for 27 years has failed the people back here. It wasn't us who failed. It was this commission that failed for 27 years. They chose not to bring in the commercial people. They chose not to go out and look. As a matter of fact, they chose to pay Team Volusia big-time money to go out and bring how many jobs here? Oh, that's right. Big fat zero. Now, they'll claim that they brought in Amazon. But then again, they took away Amazon to Daytona Beach, didn't they? Oh, that's right, they did. So when we talk about things like this, it's kind of funny when people talk about how we talk from here, but you never talk about how you talk from there. It's interesting how I've seen this change over, since the last election. Y'all want to blame us for everything that's happened from up there. Think about that for a minute. Really think about that. It doesn't work that way. You're making a decision by representing us. We don't represent you. You didn't vote us in to be up there. We voted you in to be up there. Y'all made a decision to hire this guy. And the one before that, and the one before that, and the one before that. And so forth and so on, with 17 of them. How many attorneys we've had? Oh, quite a few for 27 years. So it's not us making the bad decisions from there. Think about that before you start blaming us for something the failed managers have done, the failed commissions have done.
Kathy Bryant, please.
Good evening, Kathy Bryant, Deltona. I don't know that the mic's on because I have a hard time hearing in the back, too. Is that better? I don't want to eat the microphone. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank the commission for having the opportunity to meet with the attorneys this weekend. I very much enjoyed it. I talked with each and every group. I would not like to thank them for having it with two-day notice because there were other city events going on. People already had plans. And while, now it feels like it's on backup. You know, not, you wouldn't have seen thousands come. But you would have had more than got here, you know? So that's, that's enough about that. And I'd also like to say thank you, even though they're gone, to all the teachers who appeared to support their students that have been voted in. That's, that's an awesome thing. Opinions are like anal sphincters. Everybody has one. And some have more opinions than the collective anal sphincters in the room, even when everybody else was here. There's always going to be NIMBYs. But let's face it, nothing's been done with our land use code in years and years. And how many times did the commission roll over to the developer when there could have been compromise? Every single time, there was a rezoning where they wanted to pack in so many houses per acre next to a place that had 1, 2, 10-acre lots. And the commission was like, oh yeah, let's do that. So what you guys need to think about? And I saw the pamphlet about the city of having, looking at the downtown Deltona and comprehensive land use. I don't know if you were speaking of having it downtown somewhere because I don't see a when or a where. But if you're talking about down, having a downtown in Deltona, we got a lot of work to do before we start thinking about that. And if, one of the first things is our infrastructure. You guys have heard this over and over again. You keep putting people in here without having any plans for any kind of smart growth. And I'm going to pound this into the sand, which we're built on. And, you know, you, you need to make decisions on how we can build and how we cannot build and what is going to be best for Deltona all over. I realize each of you represent one little area. But we need to look at Deltona overall and we need to look at our infrastructure before we start deciding, let's put in a downtown, let's do this, let's do that. So sure, there's NIMBYs. There always going to be. But do you think about past commissions? Have they ever stopped to compromise? No, maybe that could have made relations a little bit better. The CRT, Citizens Response Team, I'd asked about it a couple of times and was wondering if it was, I know there's a lot of stuff going on. Has it ever been discussed? And I would like to have, see what we could do to have one because I would love to participate once again. And for those commissioners that feel like the public's just a bunch of naysayers and apparently thinks we're the hapless fools, you've got a very smart audience out here. You've got people from all walks of life. And they've listened to some of the people come up here and tell you things. And you can tell, they're educated. They're not just coming here pulling things out of anal sphincters for you. So keep that in mind. The, like Mr. Albert said, the, the public hired you not to get up there and do your thing.
Carolyn Hickerson, please.
Hello, Mayor and Board. I want to thank you for the decorum that you've shown. I am new to coming here and I'm impressed that you all get along and that, that we all have respect for one another. I do appreciate that very much. Mr. Chisholm, I asked you a couple of meetings ago about having the department heads come and give their reports. And I'm looking forward to that. But my other question now is, I checked through the website and I don't see how many vacancies we have on boards, what boards have vacancies, what requirements are for those boards. And I'd be interested in serving in a board. And I know that there are probably many citizens here that would like to serve on a board and have their input in that respect. And so I'd like to see on the website the vacancies on the boards that we have, how many boards, those vacancies that we have. And I'd also like to thank you for giving the citizens input regarding the attorney. I wasn't able to make the meeting on Saturday because it came up so quickly. And I had previous responsibilities to take care of. And so I wasn't able to make that meeting. But I want to thank all of the citizens that were able to make that meeting because they gave great input on social media that helped me make my decision on your poll. And I support the citizens that came out in force for their choice and who they would choose to represent this city. And I just want to thank you all for your service. And I want to thank you all for your kindness towards us. And yeah, we can fight each other and we can put our fists up and we can duke it out. But I'd rather it be nice and that we can work together. And I'd rather that. So that's just me. Thank you.
DelTerra, 007.
Brandy White, Deltona. Well, some are not going to like me tonight because for eight years, we've tried that. We've tried being civil. Each time we elect new people and new faces, we give you the opportunity to show us it's going to be different, to show that you deserve this respect that you're requesting. But with that said, I'm just going to get right on into what I prepared so that I don't go off course here. Right up front, I want to make it known, do not think of hammering me for personal attacks because I'll just be expressing my opinions and providing factual data regarding our representatives. You don't have to like it, but I have the right to express it and then ask for redress regarding it. Especially when constituents are allowed to be personally attacked time and time again by some of our own elected. But you expect us to sit back here and give you a respect, show you any ounce of respect, let alone talk to you with the type of respect you would like? We would like to as well. We try every election year. Start fresh. Anybody can go back and look at the meetings and see. Don't give me those looks. You've had four months to show us that we should be respecting you. I only see two, maybe a couple, with some potential that could still earn our respect. But the multiple opportunities since November, the multiple missed opportunities, my only wish for you is that you have the day that you deserve. I'm here to request redress from my commissioners regarding Commissioner Burbank's recent actions to include, but not limited to, personal attacks on a constituent, improper use of charter officers to include costing the city unnecessary legal fees, improper communication with other commissioners, and what appears to be the start of retaliatory actions against myself for holding him accountable for his votes. That's right, Burbank. We are going to start keeping tally marks, too. We read your email. But unlike NIMBY and PIMBY, we're going to call it CP, Clown Puppet, or TR, A True Representative. We can all come up with acronyms. It would be kind of like a knockoff to Sheriff Chitwood's scum back of the week, but with one positive included instead. And well, these two definitely deserve the month, not just the week. So this month, RCP, and please, don't feel shy to zoom on in. RCP is Burbank. And here's why. I have a list. You've never earned the title, so you will not be called Commissioner. This is for your lack of ethics, uninformed votes for showing such ignorance despite the self-proclamation of being so educated and worldly. And of course, your recent improper inquiry into not only myself, but my business. This month's TR is Santiago Avila Jr., our mayor. You've earned this title for how involved and active you are in our community, your motion to censure at least some form, some small form of acknowledgement, and your decision to not list our current failure for a legal rep as even an option. In closing, I'd like to do a PRR on how much we've been billed by legal for reading Burbank's unnecessary emails. unnecessary emails. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Pesca, Deltona District 2. I want to talk about a point of order tonight. Maybe it's just me, I'm not sure. I do understand the procedure. A motion is made, a second, and then a vote. But normally, we have a workshop, an agenda item, or a discussion that precedes them. Recently, we seem to have those motions, seconds, and votes, and then, after the fact, comments, not discussion because it's too late. You know, can we, whenever one of these impromptu motions pop up, inject somewhere before the vote, discussions? I'd like to hear the good, the bad, the positives, the negatives, and the reasons why and why not for your votes on any issue, on all issues. It's not that I agree or disagree with any of the motions that's been made, it's just the procedure. I think one of the things we need for open transparency and of citizens' trust is discussion, reasons why. And that's what I'm here asking for today, is for us to make sure that there's communications between us and you, and between you and us. So please, can we have a conversation, a discussion, before the votes? It helps make better informed decisions on all parts. Thank you.
Thank you for pronouncing my name right. Nobody does. This is my first time here, holy wow. That's a lot. But my name is Tish, and I'm the founder of Flipside Mentorship. The reason we started and what I wanted to bring forward to you guys was because my son and niece were bullied. My son became depressed, my niece wound up getting into an eating disorder. And according to educationcorner.com, 90% of students in grades four through eight experience bullying. 160,000 kids a year reportedly refuse to attend school over bullying. And the CDC states that kids who have been bullied suffer with low self-esteem, anxiety, and are twice as likely to commit suicide. So as a mom and an aunt, I don't want to see that happen to my family or anybody's child. And what I would like to see is on the City of Deltona's website, if there could be some resources for that. Like, I noticed that the closest thing I could find was Parks and Recs, which would send you to one of your parks, and maybe there's things there, but I felt like there could be better resources listed for families looking for help. There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could ask for any resources this young lady has, if she can leave with the clerk for our information, because that is a very near and dear subject to me. If you could provide to the clerk any kind of information so that we can look into it, I think it's an excellent idea.
Thank you. Yes. I already have her information, by the way.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'm here today to point fingers, not at you, 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 or you, but you, and you, and you. Don't know what's going on in the last five years that I've been dealing with this problem. You come in here and build a new home down from me, but yet you don't follow to make sure the swells ain't been closed up. I've talked with my commissioner, I've tried to talk with him, not talked to him, but he don't answer, so he need to take his cellphone and put it in the bathroom. I've talked with the mayor, I've had the mayor out at my property, I've had my commissioner. But I don't get no response. I was supposed to got a call before this meeting here today. Did I get it? No. But Deltona going down, all the old infrastructure is going to hell. I'm a retired contractor out of South Carolina. I know what these developers are doing. Y'all building a new home. The people's got to pay for a sidewalk, but yet the contractor had a right to say, hey, I'm going to put it into a sidewalk fund. Well, but the homeowner having to pay for that sidewalk, y'all might be putting it over here in a rich neighborhood. Y'all might be putting it over here where you don't need to put one. If the people pays for the sidewalk, the contractor shouldn't have the authority to say, hey, I'm going to put it in a fund. Pour the sidewalk so we'll have something to walk on, instead of stepping off here two foot down into a setback that I can't get no response to. I can get talk, but I can't get no action. He was supposed to call me, he didn't do it. He said, oh, I rode by, I didn't see nothing, no problem with it. Well, driving by Peachtree, you ain't going to see nothing. But it is time that y'all, that I elected, don't care about the rest of y'all, your job is to work for the citizens. His job is to work for you. And your job is to work for, if you can't get nothing from my commissioner here, I follow you because you run it large. I might want to say we should ought to go into a strong mayor formal government. But it is time that we start getting some infrastructure in these old parts and not put it into a walk trail or something like that. Get the other ones up first. How a home is described in single-family dwelling, multi-family, but yet you got a single family that you got rooms renting out, you got 20 cars parked in the yard, but yet we have to do a complaint base. Now, what I recommend is, instead of him having $25,000 to spend anytime he want to, without him, each one of y'all commissioners get X amount of dollars, I'm going to say $125,000 a year, to spend in your district that the people have voted for. Could care less about, you know, what the citizens think about their district, but I'm just talking about my district. Something's going to be done instead of getting a bushwhack. You going to pay him $200,000 a year plus a car, and he don't even live in Deltona? No, it's just not right. I don't know if the charter was changed or what, but I got to find out about that. Appreciate it on something done.
Thank you, sir. Teri Ellis, please.
You OK, Teri?
You need to quit hitting that tone, Ms. Ellis.
Oh, whatever. I need to do something fun. Teri Ellis, Deltona. OK, I'm going to try and make this really quick. So some of you may or may not know, but I did a high-level, what I call coffee cup review on the comprehensive emergency plan. And I gave that to the mayor, and I didn't get a chance to send it to the commissioners. I'm pretty sure that the city manager has it. I just want to explain a few things. So during Hurricane Ian, I believe it was, and before I say all this, please know that yes, Mr. Peters was here, he was gone, Marsha had just come on. I'm sure that there was some problems maybe with transition. So I'm not criticizing anybody for the way that that storm was handled. But I will say a few things. So after the storm, Ms. McCool gave me a call and said, hey, you know, we're going to go feed some people, we're going to go take care of a few things. So we went to a local grocery store and found out that we were able to buy supplies because of things being rationed. We asked the question, can we buy things from the warehouse? And the short story was, we couldn't get any help. So jumped in the car, and we were talking, and I asked Ms. McCool, what's the plan here? You know, I didn't hear too much information before the storm. Yes, I know that there was a press conference. Yes, I know that we had an emergency center open. I know all that. But the end result is that there was a lot of communication. And I'm sorry, but, you know, y'all all know that that's what I'm looking for. So if I'm not saying, then I don't understand how people who aren't really plugged into the city know these things. So what I found out was that there didn't seem to be a lot of coordination for after the storm. That's why we had people that were out in canoes and paddling to residents' homes and things, and doing rescues, even though I think the fire department should have been there for that, and maybe the fire department wasn't advised. I don't know what happened. But the bottom line is that the whole thing really traumatized me because I went through an experience in hurricane back in Virginia. I was on a little inlet, and it was, you know, this was pre-social media and so forth. And it was tough. We were out of electricity for three months, Red Cross wasn't there, FEMA wasn't there, we were very forgotten. And even back then, I got out and communicated with local government, and that's how we finally got some help. I'm from Ohio. We have snowstorms up there. There have been times, there was a time when I sat in the room for two days and contacted critical resources. I called a list of grocery stores, hospitals, doctor's office, whoever was on that list, because I wanted to make sure that, we wanted to make sure it was me and another girl, that that list was updated, and that we had the proper contact people and what time they were going to open, and what they told their folks and whatnot. That was the preparation that we did. And that's just for a snowstorm. So to find out that for a hurricane, that what happened here happened, is just ridiculous. So I did that review because I wanted to see what we had in place. The comprehensive emergency plan is from 2013. It has not been upgraded since 2000, I want to say 17, but maybe something happened in 19. But when you go through it, there's a lot that's missing. It still has the 2010 demographics. There's pieces in there. It's a template. That's what was delivered to you. So this is what I'm going to ask. Put together a group that's going to review that plan, review it first before you call in an emergency management consultant to look at it and upgrade that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nick Lully, please.
Hey, good evening. Nick Lully, from right here in Deltona. I like to always start with good things first when I can, so I just wanted to say, to express to the commission my appreciation for Carolyn Hickerson, who I've got to know the past few weeks, and I think I met her maybe a month or two ago for the first time. And she seems genuinely interested in caring for our city, so I appreciate being able to sit next to her tonight here in the commission meeting and talk to her a bit more. And also like to thank this gentleman here behind me, who I just met for the first time this evening as well, who made a statement of support. And finally, on some of the shout-outs, I'd like to thank Commissioner Caldwell for our conversation this weekend. I met him for the first time, really, and I appreciate any time someone invests their time to talk to a member of the community. I think that's important. So I hadn't intended to speak this evening, but some things had come up, so I'll make it very quick, just to provide some statements of clarification to some points that were made. Regarding the Facebook post that was made against me, I have not received an apology. The statement has not been retracted. As far as why, you know, the governor's not brought up in here, when the governor seeks me out on Facebook and leaves a libelous comment on my page, I will certainly address that in the venue in which that can be taken care of, which is not in the City Hall of Deltona. So that's what I wanted to express to you this evening. Thanks so much.
Good evening. I also wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I did want to reply to some comments that were made against me. So, yeah, I'm about, I'm one of the roughly 1.5 million Floridians that actually voted in favor for the governor this time as opposed to the first time. I didn't vote for the governor in 2018. And so why did that happen? So let's talk about that a little bit. Well, for starters, we went through something called a pandemic, right? And this governor didn't keep our kids out of school. He prioritized kids' mental health, kept them in school. He prioritized senior citizens and getting the vaccine first, right? And I want to specifically respond to being called out against our governor being homophobic. I have not heard our governor make any homophobic comments. What I've heard him do is say that we can't talk about sex with second graders, we can't groom children, we can't give 13-year-olds puberty blockers. If you actually poll people, like 70% of adults actually agree with things like that, right? If you're 18 and you want to make decisions, right, that impact your body and changes, that's your right. But as a 13, we don't let 13-year-olds get tattoos, we don't let them drink alcohol, we don't let them smoke weed, we don't let them do a whole plethora of things, right? We shouldn't let them make changes to their body that are going to impact their entire life. So yes, I am one of the 1.5 million Floridians that support our governor more than last time, and I actually hope that he runs to be the president one day. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go to Resolution Number 2023-07, a resolution approving the final plat for Vinland Reserve Phase 3 for 127 lot, single-family subdivision situated on 38.77 acres. Mr. Joseph Ruiz, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, and members of the public. Wait one second. Also, today I bring before you the Vinland Reserve Phase 3 final plat application. This is Resolution Number 2023-07, as the mayor read for the request to accept the plat for 127 lot, single-family subdivision on approximately 38.77 acres.
Can I make sure there's any questions?
This is...
Oh, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry. This is actually the applicant's presentation. I'll try it, let me see. So this final plat application request is consistent with Florida Statutes, Chapter 177, and the City's Land Development Code, Section 106-31, Final Plat Review. The applicant is requesting acceptance of the final plat and the performance bond for Vinland Reserve Phase 3 for legal subdivision. And if I didn't state it for the record, Joe Ruiz, interim Director of Community Services. So a little background, based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting regarding this before it was continued to today's meeting, we included all the concurrence items within the agenda item for you all to review prior to this meeting. Hopefully, that was to your all satisfaction regarding the items that I will be presenting today. So the site has a site address of 990 Peach Creek Drive. It is approximately, in totality, 102.7 acres, known as the Vinland Reserve Residential Plan Unit Development. Just some background, this was approved via ordinance number 24-2016, adopted on September 6, 2016, by the City Commission. The project phasing, I know there's been some questions on the phasing and how it has occurred and kind of the order. So the project is a three-phase project. The applicant came in, which I will be giving the, kind of the chronological, they came in for the three phases. Essentially, they began the preliminary plat application process with Phases 2 and 3. So Phase 1, which is the town home unit phases currently proposed, which we do have a preliminary plat application in from the applicant, for 126 town home units. Originally, the PUD Development Agreement approved for 128 town home units. Phase 2, which was platted last year, is for 152 single-family lots. And Phase 3, which is before you all today, the subdivision, is for 127 single-family lots. And with the approved note on the application or on the presentation, that is the asterisk for the ordinance for the zoning approval that was given. So the first application that came into staff submitted on March 13, 2018, was for the Vinland Reserve Preliminary Plats, Phases 2 and 3. The application proposed a clearing, grading, infrastructure, and roadway improvements for Phases 2 and 3, essentially for all the infrastructure and the proposal for 279 single-family lots as approved by the PUD. Some concurrence items that were approved at that time of the preliminary plat, traffic impact analysis approving 3,614 average daily trips. It's important to note that this was off of Doyle Road, therefore, the city reviewed it and approved it as well as Volusia County. The school concurrence originally was given for 124 students, reservation for the entire RPUD on May 20 of 2016. Interestingly enough, the commissioners asked for, what was the school reservation? Actually, when the Phase 3 final plat came in, staff did notice that the reservation was up for expiration, and therefore, the applicant submitted to Volusia County for an updated one, which was received on June 21, 2022, and it reserved, Volusia County School Boards, they gave a reservation for 94 students. The reason for the reduction from 124 students to 94 was that the original submittal was for all single-family homes. The latest one, which is updated, was for the town homes approved by the commission, which is why you see that reduction based on the student generation rates. Environmental report was done on the site. There were no scrub jays found, however, there were gopher tortoises that were on-site, and they were relocated. That report is dated March 21, 2018. There was also a tree protection plan on the site that the applicant had submitted to staff and was approved via the preliminary plat, and then the development order was issued on December 6, 2018. So just to give you all an overall of that original preliminary plat, here is Phase 1, which remained at that time unimproved because they had not come in for an application. But this essentially is our Phases 2 and Phases 3 of the proposed subdivision. So just to give an, an aerial of the conditions of the site prior to construction, essentially phases one and two were previously cleared, I believe, and I'd have to be fact-checked. I believe that was under agriculture exemptions. And then they had phase three, which was required to be extensively cleared, graded, and, and infrastructure installed. So after construction, just to kind of give an actual day view or current day view, this was provided by the applicant, some aerial imagery. There you can see the homes in phase two that have been constructed. And then you can also see the roadways that have been installed, including utilities, as well as the grading of the, the lots proposed. Vinland Reserve Phase 2 final plat was submitted on May 7, 2021. Final plat was for the subdivision of 159 single-family lots, complying with Florida statutes 170, Chapter 177, and Land Development Code, Section 106-31. For a performance bond was accepted by the city commission in the amount of 1.56 million. And it was approved and accepted via resolution number 2021-62 on December 13, 2021. So I stand corrected in 2021, not 2022. Vinland Reserve Phase 3, the application that is before you all today for acceptance is for a final plat requesting to legally subdivide, subdivide 127 single-family lots in accordance with the RPUD approved, consistent with Florida statutes, Chapter 177, and Land Development Code, Section 106-31. The review of these plats are technical in nature, and it is approved by our city consulting surveyor that we have on top. Implementation of policy approved by ordinance number 24-2016 essentially is what you all are doing if the acceptance of the plat is done. And the applicant has provided a performance bond in the amount of $2.87 million. Therefore, staff's recommendation today is that the city commission approve resolution number 2023-07, approving and accepting the final plat for Vinland Reserve Phase 3 for 127 lot, single-family subdivision situated on 38.77 acres within the Vinland Reserve RPUD. And the applicant does also have a presentation tonight. Any questions, commissioners?
Commissioner McCool, and then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you for this. And I just want to state for the record, I've gone over this development thoroughly. First of all, I'm really, really sad about the way that it was approved to go through prior to. The land was clear cut without regard for, that's just what we do in Deltona, what we've done traditionally. And I'm going to tell you that we're not doing that anymore. We do have land development is very prominent upon my list of things to look at. Clearcutting and raising property in Deltona needs to stop. So that's number one. Number two is that, for the record, I call out the district staff for the school concurrency determination letter. I do believe that we do not have the correct information provided in concurrency. I believe that it's our job as the city of Deltona to express our displeasure with the current district, their formulation for figuring what concurrency is, because it's BS, is what it is. The nowhere in the state statute, nowhere in consideration for the county, and nowhere in consideration for the city does it take into account a percentage of deficit when you add the teacher shortage that we have. So I'm telling you, it's BS. When we get this piece of paper here that says concurrency, educational concurrency, and I am doing it for dramatic effect, it's BS, because we're not taking into effect that we're putting our children into buildings without quality education because of this. So I'm asking the city of Deltona, take a hard-line stance on that. Quit dancing around the subject and be a leader when it comes to taking care of our children and protecting their education. So when you look at this, this is BS. We're already at capacity and overcapacity, if you take into account that deficit. So Deltona, hear me. Volusia County, hear me. State of Florida, hear me. I talk about this at every development. It's not worth the piece of paper that it's written on here. And we need to do better about protecting our children. So I need that on the record also. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
I hereby move to approve resolution number 2023-07, accepting the final plat for phase three of the Vinland Reserve Residential Plan Unit Development, located at 990 Peach Creek Drive, with the conditions as stated before.
Motion by the mayor, by Vice Mayor Bradford?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Avila Vasquez. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
Mayor, if I may, we were asked to give a reason why we vote on things. So if you, if you allow me, I would like to give a reason why I'm seconding this motion.
There's not, we don't require that on this specific vote.
Okay, because I mean, one of the residents.
And Mayor, the, the applicant has requested to present, if that's okay.
Sure.
Good evening. For the record, Michael Woods with Cobb Cole, on behalf of the applicant. And thank you for your time tonight on this phase three plat request. I'll be very brief, because I think the presentation that Joe presented is very thorough. Just a couple of the points I want to talk through, in particular, Commissioner McCool, I, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I do want to address kind of where you're, what you were saying about the school concurrency capacity. Again, the aerial photo give you the location of where we're coming from and the actual plat that you're reviewing and approving. Joe did a good job of kind of walking you through the timing and just to kind of, maybe for the benefit of people that may be listening in or kind of watching through, you know, you oftentimes will see the lawyer here when we're doing the rezoning. That obviously happened many, many years ago, 2016. And at this point in time, the process comes forward, it's to check the, the dots and make sure that what was stated back in 2016, when the approval came through, is now following through. So it is a technical review. It is a ministerial review. But it's okay to have the conversations, the questions that you're, that you're discussing. Really, from the, from the substance of a plat, just for the general public's knowledge, you're looking at the detail on the plat, because the plat's recorded document, you're really just creating the ability to subdivide the property legally and making sure that the lots are easily to be described and be conveyed by deed, and then making sure the infrastructure and the common shared areas of the subdivision are properly labeled and, and provided as well. It does take some time to do, which is why you kind of see the timeframe from Mr., from Joe's presentation of, of how long it took to go through that process. But it is technical. And so you do rely very heavily on your surveyor. You do rely heavily on your planning department to review and kind of make sure that everything is, is correct. And there is a process throughout this, this entire application process of review, verification, and confirmation. And even moving forward, you approve this plat, and it moves forward, the infrastructure still gets inspected and infrastructure still gets reviewed. I, I think that's just an important element to know, that this is part of a continuum moving forward, even though there's not huge amounts of discussion and debate. Talked a little bit about the requirements. I think the record's pretty clear, you know, code and statute. And, and I did, we did want to make four, because I was aware of the conversation, the question that got raised about the school capacity and school concurrency. And I had heard the conversation made previously about that analysis of not just about the physical improvement, but also the staffing as well. And I think that's a good conversation, and I, I hear you not just waving the flag, but putting the mark down, to say this is something to be addressed, not just here, but back to your school board and to Tallahassee as well. But just so it's clear on the record, and this does not dismiss the concerns that Commissioner McCool has about this, when you're talking about the school capacity and school concurrency with, with construction and how we get into that, it's about the physical structure. Because back in the day, when the conversation came forward, it was to ensure that there was adequate physical structure for the residents, for the students to attend, that you weren't putting new school construction on the back of existing residents. The conversation that we have with respect to making sure that you have adequate staffing, that absolutely is a obligation and a need of the school board to ensure there's retention of the employees and to ensure that there's an adequate number of employees and staff there. And I recognize that they get hamstrung by a whole lot of policies that we have in the state of Florida, and it's, well, it's less than ideal. But what we have, what we come forward for you today and what we present for you is in compliance with what the code provision provides. And so I, I just needed to reiterate that on the, on the record for you. Other than that, I think from the staff report and the information provided, the materials and information that's presented on the record support the application being approved. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
Well, I just have general, a general comment, not necessarily directed. We're, you know, Commissioner McCool brought the thing about the schools, and I totally agree with that. And we've had this conversation, I don't know how many times up here, and I've had it many times, with the planning and zoning. And, you know, there's something else coming up on the agenda. We're also talking about emergency services. We keep building and building and building. Everything keeps on gathering more money and more money. I mean, we got a thing, we got to talk about the fire department before long. This just adds to the thing with more houses, more people, more kids, more emergency services needed. I mean, we need to really start paying attention to this and redo some of our, our land use and what we're going to do. That's all I got to say.
Is there any public comment? Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Okay. Albert Bryant, and then Terry Ellis. Albert Bryant, please.
You know, I really wasn't going to talk about this one tonight, but something came up, and I feel it needs to be addressed. One thing, when I was reading the article y'all have in your book back there, it states that y'all found, well, not y'all, but the state found 61 gopher turtles. The thing is, when you relocate gopher turtles, if you don't relocate them properly, up to 60% of them can die. Hmm. So when you're doing something like that, and you're quote-unquote relocating them, are you really relocating them just to bury them, more or less? Because they wander on aimlessly for up to 16, 18 weeks, looking for a new home? Because they can't find their previous one? That's one thing. That's not y'all, that's state. I understand. I get that. I do. But then, I find that we have a commissioner that is emailing all of the commissioners, stating how he voted when he was on the P&amp;Z board. I find that really, really, really odd, that somebody would, in his position, would actually take and put on their commissioners@deltonaflorida.gov. And then I find there was an answer to that. And it wasn't a direct answer, but it was a complaint about it. And it was directed directly at Marcia. And yet, when I did my PRR, I asked for any, any conversation between the attorney and anybody else about how this was going to be solved. And you know, there's nothing here. It's like she ignored it. That's interesting. I find that really interesting, that we have an attorney that ignored a complaint about a possible sunshine violation. You know? I, I can't wrap my head around that. But what bothered me even more is when it stated that this is at least 10 times now. 10 times. Wow. So we're basically saying that somebody on this commission could possibly have, oh, that's right, violated sunshine law by emailing y'all and stating how he voted already on this. Hmm. So let me think. Does that influence a vote? Hmm, possible. Is that allowed by sunshine? Hmm. I'm not a lawyer, but it makes me wonder. Because it's illegal, I do know, to try to influence somebody else's vote. And yet, we're told that we're supposed to watch how we behave up here, because developers want to come to our town, or don't want to come to our town, by the way we behave. Hmm. Really? Here again. It's not us. It really isn't. It really isn't us.
Terry Ellis, please.
Thanks, Albert, for bringing up the gopher turtles, because that was going through my mind as well. And I realize that, you know, we're not responsible, but, you know, maybe going forward, Deltona could at least look into that. You know, I mean, it'd be nice to be known as a city who doesn't kill gopher turtles and just don't care. Okay. I want to discuss traffic studies. A while ago, I brought up how traffic has changed because of COVID. And at that point, we had a different planning director, and I was told that, well, the studies show that it really didn't have any impact, when that is absolutely not true. And I'm not even going to insult you by bringing up the studies. You can Google them and find them all over the place. Now, I know that when the applicant first submits that application, that's when they submit all the traffic information, and then it doesn't get reviewed again. But, you know, again, as we're looking down the road and thinking about what's better for Deltona, moving Deltona forward, can we have a conversation about getting good traffic data? And what we do with that data, and at what point it's applied? Because, you know, I'm looking at the dates, and all of this was pre-COVID. And that means that all the traffic from this development, all of the information is all pre-COVID. It's very, very different. There's a lot more cars on the road during the day post-COVID, because employment changed. People are working from home. You can leave home and run to the grocery store and get something to eat. You can go pick up the kids, come home. People are working, that's what you can do when you work from home. So it's very, very different. So I'm just going to ask at some point, can we just please have a discussion about traffic studies? Thank you.
Judge Bellitt, please.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Chisholm, you look very red-faced tonight. Is the blood pressure up or something? You're vibrating. Mayor, I want to address my commissioners, and I want to call them out, and I think that's my right. The two commissioners up there, both females, voted on every rezon and every development, never said no to one. That's Anita Bradford and Maritza Vasquez, never said no. Their record is there. You all know I'm telling the truth, and they just don't stop. Now, what he said before there, Mr. Starozak, about the overcrowding and stuff, you got to appreciate it. He's on the right note. But this has been going on for years. Commissioners have talked about this. This goes way back, way back, Jody. What you said is, is history in, in this. They, they've never stopped nothing. Look at the traffic. Look at the homes. Come on, look at the people. I mean, come on, this is crazy now. But they've never said no. And I got to say this, and I, this is my true beliefs, I think they're happy with their $200 a week. They've never done nothing! What have they ever done for the people? Nothing! They, they're always voting against the people. It's constant. It's for years, six years for her, and I think almost going on five for her. They don't vote for the people! I mean, this has to be, this has to stop. I think they're happy with the 200, really. I mean, what, what other conclusion could I have? They've never done anything. Nothing! I mean, sure, people have set up their concerns, like he said, about the fire department, about the roads, the schools. But it's never stopped. And that's two of the main reasons. And for $200 a week to sell your soul, I can't see it. I'm a little more expensive than that. But anyway, some of yous somewhere have to get into the people. And you have to say, listen, you want to go any further in politics? You better get the people on your side. Elections are coming up for you, Jody. You better get on the people's side. You're hitting on some good notes. I'm not going to condemn you. I'm not. You hit on some good notes. And that's what you got to do. These other ones, she's termed out. She'll do anything. Forget about her. Her, she don't even know what she votes on. So I mean, what do you expect? They're happy? even know what she votes on. So, I mean, what do you expect? They're happy with the $200 a week. That's what they look like. They do nothing. I mean, I drill it when I come up here. I make sure the people understand. I think they're here for $200 a week. They've done nothing for yous. And yous, raise your hand. If anybody's could tell me what any of them did, I'll shut up. No, there'll be no hands. Sit there, Vasquez, twist your head. You're not for the people. Yeah, you call all a point or all you are.
Point of all!
All right, everyone, calm down. That's it. Everyone, stop.
Yeah.
I'm addressing the ones that are guilty.
Mr. Strombetta, please.
Well, it's a sore spot when you tell the truth.
Mr. Belik, please keep your comments directed at me.
To you, Mayor.
I am allowing you to, as long as you remain, I don't want to hear any personal attacks. I've said that before.
All right.
To everyone, not just you.
All right. But saying, "I think they're here for 200 a week," is that, that personal attack? Is it saying they've never done nothing for the people? Is that a personal attack? They never have. There's nobody out here that picked up their hand and said that they did. Thank you, Mayor.
You have one more. She just dipped a lot of paper.
Hi, my name is Luanne, and I'm, I understand that Anita and Vasquez voted for yes on this development, and nothing against the development, but I went to the FEMA meeting, as you know, Mayor, and my house, which is on Austin Avenue on this side of Howland, Dana and Brandy went and helped one of my neighbors on one of the courts right up this, okay. So, I still have had nothing, and you two are allowing more development in the city. Why are you not helping people like me? It's been months. You know, is it the money? I'll pay you to help me if that's what it takes. I don't know, you know, what else to do. I had Damaris from the city approach me at that FEMA meeting, and she said that she would help if she has to put a trailer in my driveway. Haven't heard from her in a month. What am I supposed to do? While you two are saying yes to everything, maybe you need to come to my house. Maybe you need to help me. I am a citizen. I pay taxes. Think about that when you're approving everybody else, and the people that really need it are not getting it. You need to learn to say no. Just say no. Thank you.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
Commissioner McCool, for her second time, Commissioner Avila Vasquez, and then Vice Mayor Bradford for her second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order to address two birds with one stone, I'm going to address this here, because this will come up, so I'm gonna go ahead and prestate it, and I'm gonna answer to the attorney of record also, that in following policy written in our comprehensive plan, PSF 2-2.6, the utilization of school capacity is maximized to the greatest extent possible, taking into account transportation costs, court-approved desegregation plans, proximity to schools, ethnic and socioeconomic diversity, subdivisions and neighborhoods, demographic changes, future land development patterns, crossing guard availability, and other relevant factors. And if teacher shortage isn't a relevant factor, I do not know what is. So, this is written in our comprehensive plan. I do my homework on this stuff. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer, but I am trying to watch out for the best interest of our residents. So, when we wrote this comp plan, and it says, "other relevant factors", I would challenge anyone out there, legal or not, to bring me up about this, about teacher shortage. So, when my vote, I vote a certain way, it's because I don't believe that it follows all elements of the comprehensive plan, that being one of them. So, I'm killing two birds with one stone here. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify something. When this project was approved, I was not a commissioner. So, this project had been approved all the way back to 2017. I wasn't sitting up here. This project has been around for many, many years. And this that's coming up to us is the final project, to complete the project that was approved in 2017. That's number one. The other thing that I want to say is, Commissioner McCool, I totally agree with you on the school situation, but this is not the school board. This is not the school board. So, if the school board approves something to a developer, we cannot make our decisions and say, "The school board, you're wrong. You can't make that decision." Because this is not the school board. I would love to say that, what you're saying is true. But if we go against what the school board has approved, we're in trouble. You're absolutely right. We do have problems out there in the schools. But we cannot base our decisions on what the school board decided, because we are not the school board. Again, I agree with what you're saying about what's going on in the school. There is a shortage of teachers. And it's my understanding that when the school board approves these developments, is because they understand that the child fits into the structure of the school, but they don't have the teachers available to teach our children. So, it's two different things that the school looks at to approve these. So, we are not the school board. We cannot make a decision on what the school board approves. I'm sorry to say that. So, again, this project was approved in 2017, and ma'am, I was not here. This is the final project. And I just want to ask the city manager or the city attorney, can you please explain what the final plot decision means?
Well, candidly, it will allow the developer to go ahead and commence development, and sell off the lots, because that's what the plat does. It identifies the particular lot, so that it can be conveyed to whoever might be purchasing the property and the home.
And those are lots that were previously approved?
Well, the zoning was approved for the number of lots. The lots themselves weren't approved as far as their dimensions are concerned.
In 2017. I just wanted to make clarification.
Actually, I think it was 16.
2016. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a brief comment. The action you're taking is ministerial in nature. In other words, you're just, you're closing the envelope on the legal document to process this, this particular plat. That's all you're doing. You're not making decisions about the density, the traffic studies, or the school, anything of that nature. This is purely a ministerial effort that's designed by, it was designed by the legislature, and that's a part of our code.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
I'm semi-gonna mimic what Commissioner Avila Vasquez said. Ms. Luanne, I don't know exactly what you're going through. Obviously, I'm assuming it's COVID or not COVID hurricane-related. You know, I definitely am going to recommend that you leave your information with the city manager, so we can get appropriate staff to assist you. Okay? When we approved this plat, was it 2016 or 2017?
2016.
2016, kinda late, right?
2016 for the P&amp;D.
2016. I unfortunately didn't have a crystal ball. I couldn't look at it to see if we were gonna have COVID. I didn't know we were gonna have two hurricanes. I didn't know we were gonna have a teacher shortage. My crystal ball battery dies. And unfortunately, it's not a joke, but sometimes individuals think that, I mean, that we're able to make decisions based on six, seven years in advance. We are to make the decision based on the information given to us at that time. And at that time, we were submitted all of the appropriate information by the applicant. This was approved. They have done their part. And now, what we are doing is the final part, so they can resume what they have started. With this said, I ask the mayor that we please call the vote.
Can we please call the vote? Five-two. The motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to give our reasoning, as it was so brought out regarding this? I'm just gonna go ahead and do it anyway. So, my reason for vote...
Hold on, hold on. What is it that you're trying to do, Commissioner McCool?
Pardon?
What are you trying to ask?
We were asked to provide reasoning for our vote in the negative here regarding this.
That was for the city attorney situation?
No. I was just answering the commissioner here.
Let's move forward. That way we don't keep. We're gonna go ahead and go to old business. Request for approval of collective bargaining agreement with Deltona Professional Firefighter Union, Local 2913 for the period of October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023. Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have before you a document that's been negotiated by the city, and Professional Firefighters Union, Local 2913. It provides for the same benefits that other employees have received this year. And the only other significant issue is they increase their own contribution to their pension plan to 11%. With that, Mr. Mayor, we recommend your approval.
All right, we have Commissioner Jody Lee, and then Commissioner McCool.
Well, I think, you know, you look at this, this has already actually started from October of 2022. I mean, we're already into it. Now, I guess I was gonna wait for Commissioner McCool, because I just wanna make a motion on this, and let's get it over and done with. I mean, we're already working on it. I mean, this was, they started this before the even election, which put a bunch of us even up here. So, we're already doing it. It's kind of a mute. Let's just do it and move on.
Commissioner McCool.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had spoken to the city manager regarding this, and everyone has signed off on this here, without exception here. And being that, I think that, when do we come back up for negotiations, Mr. Manager?
We'll be starting probably in the next 30 days, 30, 60 days, we'll start negotiating for this next...
For the next year?
Yes.
So, on the record, I want to state a couple of things for this, because I know that this has been a point of contention. There is rumor out there that Commissioner McCool hates firefighters, and that's simply not true. I believe in what the union does. I believe that there's a place for the union, and the union is doing exactly what the union is supposed to do. And that is negotiating for the best possible pay packages and incentive packages that they can to protect our firefighters and their future. So, with that being said, number one, the date of the agreement, I just wanted to make sure of that, that has been addressed. Number two, as we move forward, that there be no further election year contracts, so that the waters are not muddied on that. Number three, regarding Article 10, Section 4 and 5, I want not only for the fire department, but for the city, I would like a statement, a clear statement on medical marijuana. It is national, it is local, it is here in the state of Florida. I would like to see that addressed in particular, because I believe that there should be rights for everyone to be protected under HIPAA. We need to visit, if we need to visit our city policy regarding medical marijuana. I think that I tried to get some clarity on that, because it is a medication, it is approved by the state, and it needs to be a right for all city employees. Firefighters are considered city employees. I want them protected for medical marijuana also, so I want that on the record. And number four, I would like, and talked about again, Article 18, Section 1 and 2 regarding incentive pay, and how that affects our pension, having an incentive pay straight out as opposed to an hourly rate. I need to understand that better. And also, would like workload studies done before the beginning of contracts next year. So, I want to be clear on that. I want our people protected. I want the firefighters protected. There are a few areas that I know that were of concern to the firefighters and to us. I believe that the contract that we have right now will get us through to the next contract negotiations. Although nobody is throwing daisies up, it did come to pass that everyone has signed off on this. So, just to want that being said, we're already negotiating, we're already getting close to negotiating next years. And I think that we need to do a better job for both sides this year than what we did. We had a lot of chaos during this negotiations. There was a lot of mud-slinging, there was a lot of contention, and it shouldn't be that way. The people should be looked out for as far as what the tax burden is on us. The firefighters should be looked after as far as what their pay and compensation package should be. And I really don't want us to go through that again this year. With that being said, thank you for getting this put to bed.
Vice Mayor Bradford, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Mayor, I was actually gonna make a motion unless...
I'll go with...
I hereby move to approve the one-year extension to the collective bargaining agreement with Deltona Professional Firefighter Union, Local 2913, in effect from October 1st, 2022 to September 30th of 2023.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford, and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. Do you have any public comment?
Mayor. Albert Bryant, then Brandy White, and then John DeCaro. Albert Bryant, please.
As, as they are coming up, I do, Mr. Albert, please. As he's coming up, I do want to make a comment, so we don't waste too much time. But, you said we're gonna start within 30 days, the next contract negotiations, Mr. Chisholm?
Yes.
All right. We, we need to make sure the commissioners have better information than we did this last time. I, I don't like doing things blind. Obviously, some of us up here are new, and we're not as seasoned as some of the other ones. But, what I don't want to see come before me is a three-year contract, where again, it puts us in an election year. And look, we didn't get elected to be emotional about things. We got elected to look at the interest of the residents and our firefighters. Contrary to popular beliefs, I'm also not a defund the firefighter person, right? But I want to do what's right. And we, we need to have all the information in front of us before we start working on the next contract negotiation. So, please, I'm asking you that we have more involvement, at least, because I didn't have that much in this one. So, Mr. Albert Bryant.
Where should I start? Let me see here. First off, I think I want to make a PRR, because I need the recordings from all the executive sessions leading up to this contract. I also want all the stenograph records leading up to this contract, from those meetings. Now, that being said, each and every one of y'all need to think about where this contract will lead for the next couple of years. It's a one-year contract, but what does this one-year contract do to the debt of the pension plan? Nobody said anything about that. Not a word, not a single word. And yet, we already know that the debt for this pension plan is north of $8 million. So, if y'all decide you want to actually vote for this contract, which I have no doubt it will pass because of what y'all do, one thing y'all need to really think about, you got a budget coming up.
Can I, can I, can you stop him at where he's at right now? Can we get the audio fixed? We have a bad ring back up here. I don't know if you guys hear it, but I just keep hearing the ringing come through. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, when it comes to the budget for this coming year, what we need to really think about is the city starting to pay down some of that, like we used to do before Jane Shyne decided, oh, it was better to have this clean budget rather than paying down the debt on that pension plan. Because sooner or later, it's gonna come due. Because at the end of the day, the city's responsible for that debt. And I don't care if they take and contribute more, which they should, or we put in a million dollars a year. One way or another, y'all need to figure it out. I don't care if you cut some kind of crap out of the budget that you don't need, like maybe the manager. Wouldn't bother me one bit. I mean, hell, that's $300,000 right there. But in all seriousness, y'all need to really think about this, because you got north of $8 million. And that's on the low side. I mean, very low. Because when that was thought of, they were still calculating it at 7.6%. What return are you getting at 7.6%? There is none. It's probably south of that, and probably more like 4... It's probably south of that, and probably more like 4.5. So when you think about this, and you go ahead and do this tonight, but somebody up there needs to go ahead and make a motion to take and look at that debt seriously, I mean, real seriously. And the next time y'all take and negotiate this, y'all need to have the firefighter pay more into it as well. Because it's not just our debt, it's their debt as well. Because for the most part, a lot of this past four years has been part of that debt growing, probably doubling in the last four years. So it's just something to think about. I'm not saying anything against the contract, and I'm not bashing the firefighters. I'm just saying that this contract has things in it that make you go wonder, hmm. But what y'all need to really think about is what's down the road? Because we're 27 years old, the city is, and yet we've already got $8 million or north in firefighter pension debt. And I think that's a conservative figure. Hmm.
Brandy White, please.
Brandy White, Deltona, also accused of defunding the fire department when I just wanted an open, transparent conversation with some numbers provided. But with that said, I think your motion should also include, again, the direction that there will not be another contract, right, that comes during an election year. It was mentioned, but just like everything else, you skate right past it, don't do anything with the request. It would go a long way with rebuilding trust, making sure that there isn't anything kind of odd that you're coming six months for a year agreement that's gonna expire in six months, so. I hear a lot about don't kick the can down the road, we're gonna hear it again tonight, guaranteed, but isn't that what this one-year extension is doing? Because you're still negotiating. So again, I'm also going to request that there is not an additional three-year off of this one year that puts you back at a four-year, or any other form. I mean, we can go through them, but obviously, 2024 should not be where we're needing to redo a contract, right, because of an elections. And five of you received contributions from the union. In fact, I'll quote one of you right here messaging with me, how the union wants you to tout your worldliness during a tragedy, and it's tugging at you, because you don't wanna sacrifice your principle for gain, yet you did. And I expect to see it again here tonight, lock and step. So I'm not even gonna get into, obviously, the concerns I had, because I emailed them all to you. I'm also very concerned about it being pensionable, and I didn't hear any of that addressed tonight again. And I'd also like an answer as to why the court reporter was not allowed to be present at the last shade meeting. Thank you.
John Vaccaro, please. No? Okay. Richard Belik.
First thing is I'm gonna say is I'm not against any man trying to get a good hourly wage and benefits, I'm not against that. What I am gonna get against is this falls under the forensic audit now. I mean, come on, you gotta have an audit in this city, you gotta know what's going on. You're saying it's possibly 8 million, maybe it's 6 million, maybe it's 15 million. If you don't have an audit, you ain't gonna know. Now, I gotta hold the three years, really. You promised it, you promised it, and you promised it. What are you waiting for? You got it, you said, you just said a few minutes ago, you's a new. If you're new, you wanna find out what's going on in the city, how much debt there is, don't you? If you're gonna do your job properly, that's what you're gonna do. You're gonna say, let's make a motion for an audit, for forensic audit, we want an audit. Put it to a vote, we'll see who says yes and we'll see who says no. And if anybody says no, they gotta have something to hide, you know that, come on, you guys ain't dumb. You had a business, you had a business, you had a business, you's ain't stupid, you know two and two is four. There's a lot of money that was wasted and gone. And I'm not gonna sit here and go against these guys because they want more of an hourly wage and benefits. They got families, I can't go against them, I'm sorry. But I gotta go against you's because you's ain't doing nothing. Three months, come on, you's all promised this. Now, I said before about these votes, voters, both commissioners said, oh, we're back to 2017, but they didn't tell you about the 35 or 40 other projects they voted on, yes, bye.
Vasquez, please.
I made this quick anyway. I'm for the contract and all that, and I agree with you, Dana, about the firefighters, and also the staff should be able to use medical marijuana, it's legal, you know, it helps with debilitating conditions and such. I share Albert's concern about the longer-term debt, and it kinda goes into, I mean, tonight, I did apply for the PNZ board, I have some ideas for planning. I think that we need to start planning ahead on how to diversify our tax base. You have a city full of single-family homes, mostly with a homestead exemption. We have even some commissioners, and it's fine, it's due to additional homestead allowances that you're entitled to, maybe might not pay much or any tax, and I believe in all those policies, but we need to diversify our tax base, we need more mixed use, we need things that you don't get a Save Your Homes credit on, you get the full city tax rate on these expensive parcels, you know, we need to put in things that, like sewer, for instance, that is needed to support such a building, you know, maybe not throughout the whole city, but on roads like Deltona Boulevard or Saxon Boulevard, right, where you would have places where the city can be bringing in more tax revenue to fund some of these liabilities. We need firefighters. You know, when your house is on fire, or when someone's having a heart attack, you call 911, who shows up? So I don't think that it's smart that we're, you know, I've heard everyone say we need to talk about our land use codes, we need to look at our comp plan and all that stuff, our infrastructure, the roads are awful here. We need better roads to handle the volume that we have, so that you could support these non-homesteaded ARPU's, regular, you know, mixed-use property. So that's all I wanna say. And again, I support the contract.
John Vaccaro, please.
John Vaccaro, Local 2913, president for quite some time, 13-plus years. I did hear a lady say that she was wondering where the fire department was during the hurricanes. We were extremely busy, I invited her down to talk to the chief, we made several rescues, maybe not in the area she was, but we did get directly involved, and a lot of people know that. For the lady over here that needed help, I don't know what the help is that she needs, she can reach out to the fire department, we work with them and the foundation, we'd like to hear that and know what you need, because obviously, from what you were saying, I couldn't understand what you needed, so that would be awesome. The other thing is, people come up here, and it's almost, and I don't wanna say anything negative, but they believe that when they come up here, they wanna blame you for decisions made, that they have no influence on those decisions. This contract, being a one-year contract, was directly influenced by some people that can stand up back here. The loss of our community paramedicine program was directly influenced by the law, by the individuals that are here. There's a lot of things that are influenced at this microphone. And for people to come up and say, I come to the microphone, but I'm not trying to influence you, then why come to it? I mean, that's what people do when they come up here. So with that said, the union took a stance not to come, sit down with each one of you and tell you what we wanted. We didn't go to the, I have not even met with a very prestigious city manager who were, who has dedicated his life to running cities, because I wanted him to be able to give you his 30-plus years of involvement in the city, his opinion on the contract, and not have me in your office trying to persuade you. So I didn't come to the microphone. So when I hear people saying that they did it, put their money where their mouth is, do what we did, we didn't try to push you guys to do anything, listen to what he says, vote the way you want. They did influence this contract to where it is now. We're going right back into negotiations, because they didn't want it on an election year. They didn't want a four-year contract, which puts you out of election year, they don't want a one-year contract because they don't want it on election year. It's math. It's gonna fall on an election year, unless you guys break the mold like we did with a four-year contract, okay? We can do it again, it'll get you off election year, but then you'll get upset about it. So make your decisions based on what's best for the city. I heard that I come up here, the union is looking for the union wages. You can ask anybody I've dealt with over my tenure here, my involvement with the chief, the city, programs, and everything else, we look out for the citizens. I have directly worked with this attorney and made decisions on pay raises to reduce them because of the fact it would impact taxes. The way I wrote the contract for the money coming in from transport being controlled was because I want that money to come in and support the fire department and EMS services for the citizens, not for my guys, for the citizens, okay? That money needs to be a revenue stream. I came up with the revenue stream for EMS services, the revenue stream for community paramedicine, the revenue stream for the training center, all of those things need to be accounted for.
Thank you, sir.
And I appreciate it.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
All right. Thank you. So we already have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. Can please, we please go for a vote. Motion passes 7 to 0. Gonna move on to request for the approval of the contract for James V. Chisholm to serve as city manager, James V. Chisholm.
Mr. Mayor, best I can tell, you have most of the information in front of you, if it's your pleasure, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah. We have a question by Commissioner Jody Lee and then Commissioner McCool.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCool can go first.
Commissioner McCool?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I need this to be clarified, that the contract is for one year. I need to understand a couple of things. Another thing, I just met the, I just met the assistant city manager, which I don't know if everyone's had a chance to meet the assistant city manager yet, so I just want that clarified, and mainly that this contract is for one-year period, and I need a date, time certain, that we are looking for our permanent city manager. We have, I'm gonna bring up a couple of things, things that we said we're gonna do, this happened with the last interim city manager, we're just kinda floating along, and I don't think that that's good for the city, I think that we need to set the expectation that this contract is for one year, in that time period that we are bringing in a permanent city manager as our charter officer, we need to remember that. So I just need to make sure, I need a time certain that we are choosing, we keep fluffing around this, that we choose a permanent city manager, we need a permanent city manager. And I need, before I vote on this, to understand what that picture is. Please give me clarification on that, those two points. Permanent city manager and the date, the length of this contract.
First of all, on the permanent city manager, we have not stopped advertising and looking at applicants, so that continues. As far as the term of this contract, if it's one year, it's one year from today, that's your term. And if it didn't, if someone suitable hasn't come forward in that period of time, then you'll have to find one yourself.
Okay, well, from what I understand, yes, we do have, we closed out the application process for a permanent city manager, but you're telling me that that is still open?
We're still receiving applicants now.
When is the close date on that, so that we can choose a city manager?
It's an open date.
This is making me crazy, because here's the thing, we can't quantify, we can't set a date, we can't create expectation, and we need to move forward, and I don't...
Commissioner McCool, not to interrupt you, let's set a date here as a commission. It's really that simple.
That's what I'm asking for, that we set the date, the close date of the city manager search, that we get the new city manager in here, right? And that we understand what that date is moving forward, that the people understand what this date is moving forward. Because now, are we gonna lose some good applicants? Because we told them that we were gonna hire them, or that we were gonna look, and we had these applicants put their application in, but now, oh, wait, we, all of a sudden, we signing a one-year contract with the interim. So I just wanna create the expectation and know what that time certain date is.
So are any of the ones on the board gonna make a motion? Okay, so let me make a comment before we go there. This commission is here to give direction to the city manager, right? So to Commissioner McCool's point, let's give direction, right? And let's not flip this kinda like we unfortunately did with the next subject coming up. Let's give clear, concise direction, let's give expectation of what we wanna see, when we wanna see it, and how we're gonna see that happen. Meaning, we're gonna give direction to our city manager on, A, a date, when is the ultimate date that we're not gonna search for anymore, we're gonna vet the ones that we got, two, set an expectation of what we're looking for, the experience, have this city attorneys in the past, for example, sued other cities that they worked for? What knowledge do they bring to the table? In other words, expectations of what we want from that city, that city manager? And three, when are the residents gonna be able to participate with sufficient time to vet their permanent city manager? And then the final part is, when are we gonna be able to come together in a workshop and narrow it down, including with whatever analysis our residents have? So let's do that before we make this motion, and then we can move forward and everybody can have peace of mind. That way, the city manager, Mr. Chisholm, can continue with the projects that we have, which is a reason why we're keeping them for the year, or however time that we need, and we can find a good quality candidate, so we can finally close that revolving door to city managers. So does anybody up here want to start that?
Commissioner Jody Lee?
You know, when I originally made this motion for him for a year, it was for a year to hopefully he can find an assistant city manager. From my understanding, the person he hired, Commissioner McCool, he keeps saying assistant manager, from my understanding, it's his assistant, not the assistant manager of the city.
Can I get clarified, can you clarify that, Mr. Chisholm?
The assistant I have right now is not the deputy manager.
There you go, thank you.
So we do not still have a deputy manager?
You do not have a deputy manager.
Do you need a deputy city manager, sir?
Yes, you do.
No, do you need a deputy?
I do, yes, I do.
Hello, excuse me. Like I was saying before, I made this motion, hopefully Mr. Chisholm can find us an assistant, he can hire an assistant, we have within that year contract to see if we're gonna like this person, we get along with this person, if they're gonna be good for the city. That'll eliminate a lot of this argument, I don't care where they come from, what part of the country, he knows more about running a city than all of us combined. I mean, everybody can argue and make all the faces, he's done this for 40 years. I made the motion so he can get somebody with experience, he knows about this thing, and I'm not saying, look, if he picks somebody out of Daytona Beach, I can guarantee I'm gonna have a big problem with that. Find us a city manager, I said, that's why I made the motion, give him a year, he can find somebody, if he hires an assistant, we get to see what they're like, how they're doing, if we like him, we can keep him, if not, we can go back through all this then. Where he's starting to throw all these projects in, things are starting to get done, we're having a little bit of stability, it's kind of a novel idea to have some stability.
I don't think Commissioner Jody Lee, what Commissioner McCool's, she's not disagreeing with you, I think she wants...
If he hires an assistant, we get to see what they're like, how they're doing. If we like him, we can keep him. If not, we can go back through all this then. Where he's starting to throw all these projects in, things are starting to get done, we're having a little bit of stability. It's kind of a novel idea to have some stability.
I don't think Commissioner Jody Lee, what Commissioner McCool's, she's not disagreeing with you, I think she wants us to have the notion of, we need to get the public involved.
I totally agree, but like I said, which is still my time for a second.
Again, let me just finish this really quick and I'll give you the floor back. All we're saying is, let's get somebody in there, right? Let's go through the process like we're doing and once we all collectively, including the residents, pick that person, I don't care if that person's gonna be his deputy, which will be a great trial, but we need a timeline.
You're right. That's why he's got a one-year contract. It's up to us to hire the attorney and the city manager, not the assistant, not the department heads, nobody else. We hire the manager and the attorney. He hires everybody else.
We're removing the residents out of the equation.
No, if he hires an assistant, everybody will have up to a year to come meet the assistant that he's hired and get to know him, see if they're gonna be good for us. If they're not, he could get rid of, or he could get, you know, then we can make direction then. But he's got a year to find us a good, decent assistant that can take his place when he's done.
So let's do this, so we're never gonna agree on this. Let's move forward with this contract, so let's vote on this, right? And somebody's gonna make a motion. Mr. Chisholm, we're gonna have to workshop this.
Mr. Mayor.
Give me one minute, Commissioner Burbank, because you're not on the, I have Vice Mayor Bradford.
Vice Mayor?
We need to make sure that as a unit, we're collected and we know what we're giving you direction, because right now, you're getting two or three different directions from the commission. So we need to make sure that's a unified direction and we need to make sure our residents are part of the process. So Vice Mayor Bradford and then Commissioner Burbank, do you still wanna say something?
It will depend on what she says.
Commissioner or Vice Mayor Bradford, please.
Okay. I'm gonna address a couple of things here. One, we had a workshop last week, but I'm not opposed to a workshop, again, to go over our parameters. Two, we do not hire a deputy city manager, nor do we have authority to hire a deputy city manager, because that is staff, that is called malfeasance. That is up to Mr. Chisholm if he feels that if we appoint somebody, that he wants to put them on his staff. We can't sit here and tell him, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chisholm, we cannot tell him, you are going to work with this person, this is staff. That is straight out malfeasance. It can take upwards, I think it was DeBarry to Land, it literally took him two or three years to hire a city manager. And I'm not saying that that's the time period it's gonna take. I personally made a vow, vowed that after the last three fiascos that I've sat up here through, that I would not, again, rush into a decision to bring somebody into that seat that is not qualified, that does not understand land development, that does not understand all aspects of being in that seat. That's not an easy job. And he sits there pretty calm and collected for all the happenings in Deltona. So I don't have a problem with setting a time period. I think setting a contract of a year says a lot. I would think that within a year, I'm hoping we're getting some, you know, reasonable applicants that maybe, once we get XYZ number, then we can then hold a community forum. At that point, maybe we can work with it, but what we cannot do is give him direction on who he will hire. So let's be very careful of that. All right? I am, did we make the motion? Has the motion been made? I moved to approve the city manager contract for James V. Chisholm for a one-year period effective, what is today?
March 6th. Second.
March 6, 2023, for a one-year period. And Mr. Chisholm, can you please set up, I know you probably have a lot of workshops, but coming up, can we have a workshop and then everybody kind of come in with what they would like to see as a city manager and then we can kind of go with that?
We have it.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. And then we have public comments.
Okay, so we're gonna have Albert Bryant, then Kathy Bryant, then Brandy White, then Richard Belik, then Carolyn Hickerson. Albert Bryant, please.
Section 6 of the Charter, filling of vacancies. The commission shall begin the process to fill a vacancy in the charter officer, the city manager, city attorney, within 90 days of vacancy. Any acting manager or acting attorney may be appointed by the commission during a vacancy of office. Hmm, let's see here. We've had an interim, an acting, an interim, an acting for three years now. And yet, y'all wanna drag this on some more. I would hope that the starting date of this one-year contract was when he actually started. Because we were told, it was a six-months contract back then. So in another six months for a year, y'all are gonna say, well, we'll do this again for another six months. I mean, really, people? So just be careful what y'all are thinking up here, because in this contract, way back here in the back, under section 12B, it states, "as well as their heirs, executors, personnel representatives and respective successor and interest." What, if he dies in office, his freaking wife can come up here and take over for him? Really? That's interesting. I've never seen that in a contract like this in my whole lifetime. I was baffled when I saw that. And I still haven't heard how much this contract's actually worth, but nobody up here cares. I hear it's north of $290,320, 233, somewhere in that neighborhood. But, oh, don't worry, it's only $200,000. Has anybody actually seen him drive? You're giving him a city vehicle. Has your insurance actually signed off on that? A 77-year-old man driving from Daytona Beach to here? Hmm, interesting. Like I say, we've been three years diddle-daddling around with an interim here, an acting there, an interim. Hmm. But we'll extend this another six months. Oh, no, 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 wait, wait, a year! Oh, no, wait, wait, wait! It may be longer, because we know he hasn't gotten up off his butt and actually done really anything, has he? Hmm. Y'all keep saying he's doing a wonderful job. He doesn't answer any of these emails from out here. No transparency, no open government at all. I heard he won't even take calls from the county anymore. Hmm. Yeah, that really helps, doesn't it? So when you think about this contract, you know, I'm almost like Mrs. McCool earlier, I wanna throw this thing away, because as far as I'm concerned, it's useless. I don't know who wrote it, but it's about useless, it really is. There are so many things in here that are wrong, that I could spend 45 minutes up here and still not get through with all the things that are wrong in this. Maybe Marshall wrote it.
Kathy Bryant, please.
Good evening, Kathy Bryant, Deltona. I'm gonna express some of the same monetary concerns. Again, you know, once again, I don't disagree with having somebody here when the next person comes in and have a transition. That's not a problem. I do have a problem with the fact that, like Mr. Albert said and like I've researched myself, is that there's the $200,000, there's the insurance for him and his wife. I have to pay a good chunk of my insurance. Does my employer contribute? Yes, they do. I don't get a free and I have to pay even more into it if I'm covering family. The vehicle and the unlimited driving and stuff like that, I think it's a little much. I agree that he's here, you know, he's here trying to do a quote-unquote, "help us out", but he's also helping himself out, too. I don't know what he's done and what he hasn't done, I've just heard little bits and pieces that he's doing a great job, but I read the manager's report in the back and I didn't, I mean, there was like a little blurb in the back about stuff the city's doing. I would like to see more of what is actually happening and going on and replies. Thank you.
First thing, I don't know why he walked away, because he is sadly confused on how this process works. We don't have him hire our next city manager. That's not how that works. He can hire the deputy city manager all day long, but he does not get to make that decision as to who our next city manager is. They don't automatically then just become the city manager when he leaves. There still has to be a process, a search, applicants interviewed, the whole nine yards. With that said, I also wanna know why the ICMA code, like we had with Peters, why isn't that in this contract? Just a reason, like whether you put it in there or not, it's up to you guys, but can you give me a reason why you don't want it in there? Again, I'm seeing this motion brought before us, but I asked over a month ago for the simple breakdown of the numbers, so we can get a total understanding. Did anyone get the requested info of the total expected cost for the city manager? The total cost before and now after these required changes? If it's not available today, this should be tabled until you're provided that information or you're making an uninformed decision. If you don't know those numbers and you can't tell us those numbers, because yes, you're talking about a $40,000, let's talk about that. You're talking about a $40,000 a year increase. Is anybody going to justify or explain to the people who are paying for it why it's deserved? Why it's being requested? And how much does that now increase other things like what we're paying into retirement? Because it's based off salary. So that now increases as well. Nobody is saying a word about the financial aspect of this. It's very concerning. The contract needs to read one year, no renewal. He said it, we heard him. He said at the end of this one year, y'all gonna have to figure it out. So then that needs to be stated, on record in the motion, one year, no renewal. And in that time, the first responsibility is to get the ball rolling. It's already started, applicants rolling in. Let's go ahead, get those earmarks along the way. Have it ready for the vote by the 10th month of his contract on who the next new city manager is, so they have time to shadow, or if you wanna go longer, six months. In six months, you should be able to close the application process, start the interviews, get the public involved and have a decision. That gives him six months to work with the new city manager. But to say that he can hire a deputy and they automatically become the next city manager is not how it works. They are a charter officer. That doesn't get to be just an automatic chosen thing from a city staff member. I emailed you guys my concerns previously, again, no, four weeks, six on my first request. Nobody's yet to answer the question. If you vote on this contract without the numbers, you are doing a huge disservice, not only to your constituents, to yourselves, to your families. And it's an uninformed vote, because you don't have the information needed. Thank you.
Carolyn Hickerson, please.
Oh, boy, do I have a lot to learn about the city. First, I wanna thank Mr. Bryant, Mrs. White and Mr. Ellis, because they're the squeaky wheels that I can learn from and that all of us can learn from. But there's a lot to learn. I come from a city that is run by a mayor and not a city manager. And so even though I think Mr. Chisholm is a very likable person, and I really do think he's a very likable person, I need for this board to make some motions to hear your citizens. Okay? I need a motion that you will have department head meetings, department heads answer to you here in these meetings once a month. I need you to make a motion that you will require him to have board vacancies available to the citizens once a month, so that the citizens know what's going on. What I'm hearing from all of these three people, that I'm thinking, oh my goodness, these three people are brilliant, they know so much about this city. I wanna sit down and have coffee with them for a week. You guys need to have transparency. It's, I mean, that's so, this is what they're begging for. And I'm just a new resident and this is what they're begging for. And to hear that they're going back 27 years, which to me is irrelevant, 27 years, I don't care. You know, you guys are mostly new. I care from what happens from this point forward and I don't care what happened last year or five years or 12 years or 27 years ago, I don't care. I can't fix the past. None of us can fix the past. But please, listen to these people that are very smart, that are asking and begging you for information. And the only way that's gonna happen is if you make a motion to cause this man or whoever sits in that seat to become transparent and, and, I can't even think of the word now, I'm so upset by this, that they're transparent and accountable to you. All of the citizens should be accountable, all of the city should be accountable to you. You should know what's going on and we should know what's going on. We're not HR. Citizens aren't HR. We can't hire and fire a deputy assistant. We can't hire and fire anybody. We're not in that business, but that seat's important. And the lawyer is important and we should have, yes, the citizens should have a say in all of that, but my goodness, I'm listening to three people that are very, very smart and very articulate and have a lot of, you know, skin in this game. And I'm hearing them beg every single week for transparency and information and that can only happen if you make it happen. Please, make it happen and let's stop this rotating, whatever we call this, let's just stop it and let's start acting like the adults that we are and giving ear to what these people are begging for and then we can stop the circus of Deltona and get busy at doing the business of Deltona. Thank you.
Richard Belik, please. Richard Belik? Okay. Mayor, that closes public comments.
All right, can we please come up with the vote? Motion passes seven to zero. Now we move on to request to select a city attorney for the city of Deltona. Mr. Chisholm?
As you know, this last weekend, we had the three city attorney groups appear here to answer questions of the public. We had, they were here from 10 o'clock to 12 noon and we had a number of citizens attend. Most of those who attended are in here today. So it is, it's your pleasure, while you'd like to proceed, you have the names of the three companies. And leave it to you, Mr. Mayor.
We have Commissioner McCool and Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you. I would like to, if we could, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, would like to hear from all three applicants. I know that they met with the public and as requested and I know that we were tasked with meeting with the applicants and I just wanted to hear if we could for a few minutes, at least as much as we do hear from the public, give them an opportunity to address us and the public and answer any questions, if that's permissible, sir.
I don't have an issue with it. Mr. Chisholm, are we missing one of the applicants? We're missing one of the applicants, right?
I think one of them is missing, yeah. I think one of them is missing you.
Do you have any issue with us listening to the applicants?
We made no request for them to be here tonight, so, just so you know.
Okay. Let's move on to Vice Mayor Bradford, and then if anybody else has any questions, and then Commissioner McCool, if anything, we can direct one or two questions directly at the applicants that we do have here.
Okay. And one of the questions that I presented to Mr. Chisholm, which thank you for responding to me, was, please give us the actual number of years. So I wanted to see our RFQ and what did we require of our attorney based on our, I believe it was prior workshop before that RFQ was set out. And so the request was, can I please get the actual number of years that each of the firm's representative has specifically represented a city and their actual experience directly as a city attorney? And one of the responses, this was a response as part of the RFQ, which is section 3, 3.1, attorneys intended to serve as counsel to the city must be licensed to practice law in the state of Florida, which I believe all three checked that off, must have 10 years' experience practicing in the field of local government law. Such experience should include representing municipal governments in facets of daily government operations, as well as experiencing coordinating and managing the work of other law firms brought in for areas of specialized and experience. Board certification by individuals of the firm in the field of city, county, and local government law is desired. Those were items that I believe we specifically requested for. Mr. Chisholm, of the three firms that are listed, can you go over those qualifications of the three firms that we have? And I ask this because we talk about having experience, we talk about having knowledge in working in city government. You know, one of the things, I'll tell you that we get a lot of comments on is, I'll use the sitting city attorney, which has pretty much been here the whole time that I've been here, is we ask a question and we're told, I'm going to get back with you. And it's kind of funny because we attended ethics training on Friday, and the attorney who was teaching the class, who has done city government for years, basically, one of the things he said was, a good attorney, before they make, they respond to a comment and they give you that answer, they're going to tell me, let me look into this. They don't do that nine times out of 10 because they don't have the answer. They're doing that because there's so many laws passed that are piggy packed onto piggy back, and you've got to do the research on those to make sure that you have it. So I don't care what three firms we hire, I can guarantee they're going to say when we ask them a question, let me look into that. So I'm going to let you answer my question now.
Yes. To start with, Cobb &amp; Co made a presentation, and in their qualifications, they list the fact that their company's been 100 years in history in this, in local government areas of various sizes in Florida. The firm has helped establish two dozen community development districts and independent special districts, and they provide ongoing representation of most of those districts, including compliance with all government and sunshine and public records laws. They helped to draft city charters of some cities. It was DeBury, Deltona, Palm Coast, and served as charter counsel for Bivard. Attorneys at Cobb &amp; Co have special project experience advising governments in environmental matters, including environmental due diligence, liability issues, brownfield redevelopment, regulatory matters, and before government agencies. They currently, or has, Cobb &amp; Co currently or has recently represented the following local governments in environmental matters: city of Tampa, city of Hines City, city of Ovita, city of South Daytona, Fort Pierce redevelopment. And then they show their, the attorneys, Mark Watts, Rick Carl, Robert Doan, Douglas Collins, and Michael Woods, all attorneys for the firm that would be surprising support. The only, I mean, I don't see that there'd been a city attorney for any of those groups unless you got one. Is it South Daytona? I think Carl was at South Daytona for a period of time.
As a city attorney?
So that's, and he also served as assistant county attorney for Volusia County. Rick Carl has, of that legal group. The other, let's see if I can find the other ones here. Fishback and Dominic. Their qualifications.
Mr. Chisholm, I don't mean to interrupt you. Cobb &amp; Co has how many years of city or county experience?
I don't, they don't tell me the years. I don't know.
As an actual city attorney?
How many years were you all city attorney in South Daytona?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years. Is Mr. Carl going to be our city attorney, or is it going to be Mr. Watts?
I think Mr. Watts is.
Okay.
But he's never been a city attorney.
Mark, you've ever been a city attorney? Okay. Then on to the other group.
Unless the vice mayor needs it, I don't think you need to read all the, I think we're just looking for the numbers in general.
Yeah, I'm just looking at general numbers because based on the RFQ, I want to make sure that everybody has fit within those numbers. Part of the RFQ was, I believe, what I just read was 10 years minimum experience.
Fishback and Dominic, and the attorney, lead attorney, I think it was Andrew Maui, and he has 20 years as county attorney in Osceola County, and their firm represents all host of cities in Orlando, Orange County area. Marcia Segal George has 32 years of, in representing cities throughout the state, has a long history, as well as a long history with this city. And that's probably as good a description I can give you. She's worked for Aldermont Springs, Cocoa Beach, Donellen, Deltona, Osceola County, some council in Osceola County, as well as others. I know Fort Myers, he's done some work there, too.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Commissioner Jody Lee?
I just want a couple little comments. I was here Saturday. I came in and spoke to the attorneys too myself, and the last workshop we did, I said numbers of what they get paid, or what they're offering, and all this other stuff. But after speaking to Mr. Mark Watts and Mr. Carl, I was wrong on my figures when I said that 1.7 million, so I want to correct it. I want, you know, I've had all kinds of people. I was, I figured in, I believe when I looked at all the numbers, I figured in a couple legalese and stuff like that. When I, I guess I shouldn't have added that into, you know, for paralegals, I added that cost in there, too. So I just want to correct. That was my mistake. My bad. After speaking to y'all, I forgot my numbers, and it came out to be a little bit different, but it was, it was much better. But thank you for helping me clarify it when I spoke with you gentlemen. You know, I've had a lot of people ask me about why I made this motion originally. I mean, I don't know if it's the time to say it, but I mean, someone asked me why I made this motion originally, to get rid of our attorney law firm. And I was approached last week, and a gentleman asked me, or told me that, you made the motion, I didn't find out about it for a month. That's exactly why I made the motion, because evidently somebody's not paying, taking attention to our city. So now you all know.
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Caldwell?
I'd like to, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, I wanted to make comments on this also, as far as what the city thinks that we want for a city attorney. First of all, there is no secret in Volusia County, the state of Florida, even within our city, that our wishes are to be taken seriously as a city. Our city has branched so deep in dysfunction, you can tell from our development patterns, you can tell from our decorum, you can tell from the lawsuits that we have, both known and unknown, the amount of settlements that we've had with the city. There has been no proactive vision for this city when it comes to those things, and it's sad. I understand what we put an RFP, RFQ out for, the parameters that we think that we want, but we move those scales all the time for employees, for staff, for city managers, for whatever else the mood strikes is. So it's a guideline, but it's not a hard rule, and I think that we all know that up here. What I want in my city attorney is I want someone proactive. I want them thinking about where we're headed and not what we're mired in. I want them to have the ability to lead us, and I want them to have a good name with the state of Florida, with the constituents, with legislators, because we are more big picture than what we're thinking about here, what we're talking about. We need state experience also. We have some serious infrastructure issues that we need to address. We have serious morale issues that we need to address. So we need a law firm to represent us that has name recognition. I want a law firm that understands about economic development. I want a law firm that understands about how we need to plan our city and where we've made mistakes and how we get out of there. I want a law firm dedicated to proactivity, one that is large enough to not only work in our business, but work on our business. We've been so busy legally putting out fires for so long that we've not done anything innovative, we've lost our vision, we don't have anyone to drive that forward because we have been working in our business, not on our business. That needs to change. We need someone good with contract negotiations. We need someone that builds consensus and relationships as opposed to adversity and rancor. And we need to drill down, to hone in, and to put Deltona on the map as far as having legitimacy in who we represent our city. And I want us to think about that as we move forward. How are we progressing as a city? What representation do we want? We did a little thing, and I asked for this to be done because, say what you will, NEMBI, whatever, people, whatever, tribes, whatever you want to call our people. Our people, again, are smart. And I'll remind you that there were informal polls done by both the mayor, residents, and Deltona Strong. Because did the city, did we have somebody here taking information in polls, asking for information? We did not. And this information was collected, and I would hope that we would listen to what the people want also, because this is our officers, our charter officers that we're talking about. And when our people talk about how they want to move forward, they voted on, they voted on this. I would hope that we would listen to our people and do what our people want also, each one of us. Survey our people and ask, what is it that you want to see out of your charter officer? I think that all of the attorneys are qualified. We can break semantics all day long. We can pick. Each one has their own solid merits. But I want us to think about those things. Who do we want the face of Deltona to be? I want us to think about that as we make our decisions, as we ask our questions, and I want us to hear. I want us to listen to hear when we hear from these attorneys about what their vision is, about how they want to help Deltona. And I heard some pretty compelling stuff over the weekend, feedback from people on this. I really just want us to listen to our people as we do this, because we say we're making these decisions up here. We're making these decisions for ourselves, or we're making these decisions for our people? Are we representatives of ourself or our people? It's our job to do our fiduciary responsibility, limiting our exposure, talking about cost avoidance and how we move forward. And we need to think about that. I'm a jealous commissioner. I want my attorney working for me. It doesn't matter that they've worked for other cities. I'm not another city. I'm Deltona. And I want that understood also. So breaking down semantics, we could go back and forth all day long regarding that.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool. Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes, I'll make mine short. After reviewing all the applications and taking in the concerns of all the residents, I would like to make a motion to accept the law firm of Marcia Segal to represent the city of Deltona.
I will second that.
Guys, so we have a motion for Marcia Segal by Commissioner Caldwell, and a second by Commissioner Burbank. I haven't made my comments yet, so I'd like to make my comments, and then I want to hear from the public. So my comments, we just got rid of a firm that 90% of their billing comes from one of the applicants. 90%, roughly. We want to move forward by continuing with the same faces that we currently have. We have two other applicants here. We are all okay with, we are all okay with taking our time to get our city manager, yet we have not only rushed our residents, but we're rushing ourselves to get this done. And it's our fault, because we had sufficient time. Jody, how many days did we give them? 60 days?
90 days.
90 days?
90 days.
So it's our fault because we dropped the ball. I can admit when we can, when we dropped the ball. I'm telling you right now, I feel very uncomfortable with two of these applicants. I'm not going to be anybody's guinea pig. This is the largest city in Volusia County. We need experience. But I also don't think that we need to continue with the same people that are part of a law firm that we just fired. It makes no sense. It makes no sense. I'll be more than happy, after we hear the public, to go for a vote. But I am literally, if the vote fails, I am going to hand my gavel over to our vice mayor, and then I'm going to make a motion myself. And when the time comes, I will make that motion. So at this time, please, I would like to hear public comment.
Carolyn Hickerson, Douglas McDonald, Albert Bryan, Brandy White, Terry Ellis, Kathy Bryan, Sarah Bryan, Richard Ballack. Okay, all right. Carolyn Hickerson, please.
I made my comments public this weekend, and I emailed all of you my comments regarding one of the applicants, that I feel there's just too much baggage for that to be carried forward, and hasn't served the city well, and has brought division to the city. And so I made my public's comment, public, my thoughts public, and I gave a copy to all of you. And so I'm not afraid to say that I don't think that Marcia has a place here anymore. And I have an opinion of one of these legal firms, but that's going to be up to you, what your decision is. But I don't believe Marcia has a place here any longer.
Doug McDonald, please. Albert Bryan, please.
Wow. You know, I've actually done requests on the Fowler-Fini invoices. You're right, Mayor. There's a lot of stuff in here that says Marcia's name all over. And she's just an associate attorney. Just for this past January, just January, 347 hours. Fowler, 14.7 hours. 80 grand we spent on attorney. That, oh, that's right. She wanted to reverse the vote of the people. Really? There was nothing wrong with the charter amendments that we had, and yet she proceeded to charge us a whole bunch of hours in here. And yet y'all want to vote her back in. Hmm. You know, I can honestly say, I can enjoy walking out the parking lot and talking to Mr. Fowler. Never had a problem talking to Mr. Fowler. Never had a problem talking to Mr. Fowler. He's smart. He's actually good at what he did. Now, does that mean that I want him as my attorney? Eh, you know. But that doesn't mean he's not, that doesn't mean he's not a good attorney. He's done very good in Altamont. Very good in Altamont. Never had any problems in Altamont, as far as I know. But think about this. When you have a lawyer go rogue because he's out in Colorado, and she wants to reverse what the people voted on, makes me wonder why you want her back in. Wow. Now, Mr. Watts knows, I've talked to him personally. I wouldn't wish this job on him or anybody else, because, not because of what's going on here, what goes on up there. The emails I cited earlier is just one example. For 27 years, I could throw out probably 1,000 examples of how piss-poor this commission has been. And y'all keep talking about change. Where's the change? Where is it? You're not going to get any change when somebody tells you, "I can do this job all by myself." There's a problem with that, a really big problem with that. She didn't say in her resume that, "I can build a law firm inside this city. I can make a perfect law department inside this city." She didn't say that in her resume. She said, "I can do it all by myself." Are you sure you want that? When she can't even write a contract properly? Wow, that's amazing to me. That means none of y'all have actually done your damn homework again. It just shows just how piss-poor we still are. And, you know, Mr. Chisholm was right last Monday when he talked about the fact that when developers look at this meeting, they don't want to come here. But it's not because of us. It's because of you. Do your damn homework.
All right, puppet masters, let's talk. Anybody get an answer on the clarification of the billing I requested? You mentioned your numbers were wrong, but then you failed to mention what the real numbers are. So I'm going to ask the attorneys who are here, if they seriously want considered, I would ask them to please come forward and explain the billing so that everybody is open and understanding and transparent before making their decision on what it's going to cost, average. Obviously, there are some things you can't calculate, but we can calculate about how many hours a week they plan on putting in, because you guys haven't directed them on We do have the hourly figures, but again, the numbers calculated were incorrect, so we haven't been given numbers still. Why is it everything on this agenda tonight is lacking any type of financial information with it? Blank stares. Nobody knows. Big surprise. And I'm surprised you have a voice. I've never heard you speak before. So I'm really confused. I would love your personal explanation on why you feel Marcia should be representing our city still, because she still is, so she would just be continuing. She means she was never fired. The Florida bar still has her listed at Fowler &amp; Feeney. Her office is there, so where's she doing her work? Is she representing other cities under Fowler still? These are things nobody's asking. And Jody, you actually cited billing, in case there was some confusion. I had to listen back, because I thought the 1.7 was for fishback, but it was actually for Cobb-Cole, both of which said the numbers were wrong that were stated anyhow. But I honestly, I would love to know the numbers. Anyhow, the first thing that this attorney, whoever it shall be, should come forward, the first thing they need to work on is the things regarding the moratoriums, such as the city land development code, the comp plan, as well as the pass-through fees, because our current representation still hasn't done that. But hey, bring her back, right? Let's see, what else? Whoa, let's talk about her long history that you guys brought up. 30 years, yeah. Anybody researched that history? I did. None of them were happy with her. The end result wasn't good. Fort Myers, she destroyed them regarding the hurricanes. You do realize that, right? Probably not the greatest city to use it as an example for exemplary. Speaking of which, how many lawsuits have we been in since they've been representing us? The highest amount we've ever seen. But hell, it only makes sense to bring her back, right? You fired for billing. You fired those who represented us. There's two listed on the city website. Fowler and Marcia. In the newspapers, two are listed. Fowler and Marcia. Guess who you fired? Fowler and Marcia. Why is this, I don't understand where the confusion is. Why is she even here? She's fired. You're saying you're listening to constituents? Quantify it. You have the polls. You have the emails. Did anybody calculate the emails you received? I want to hear them. What was your direction given? For me, I was very clear. There's two that I'd be willing to accept, but again, we didn't have numbers, so I couldn't give you a breakdown. But we had a whole history of who we shouldn't have. It'll cause an investigation, trust me.
Good evening, Kathy Bryan, Deltona. Again, I'm not happy with the, "Let's get this done, let's get this done," and no notice for the public. I do appreciate the attorneys. They've already proven they're here for us, because they were able to attend on Saturday at such late notice, so I appreciate them for that. I spoke to each and every one of them. And I haven't emailed you, because I knew I was coming up here to speak on this tonight. I try to be fair with my questions. There was questions I asked each specific group that were the same, and some that are a little bit different because of different history. I talked to Mr. Mai, and I hope I said your name right. I enjoyed talking with them. They have a lot of municipality experience. One of my biggest concerns was that they represent other cities. What happens if we're in a dispute? They explained they would hire attorneys for each city, bid the same fee, same level of, you know, attorneyism, for lack of a better word. In any case, so that made me happy. I did ask them about their charging quarter of an hour versus a tenth of an hour. I would rather get charged a tenth of an hour for six minutes than I would a quarter of an hour. But what the thing is you have to remember is that cost is not value. What you pay, you can pay, I can pay $10 for something, and it breaks. And then I have to get another one, and then I pay another $10. And then it breaks again, and I have to pay another $10. Or I could buy a good one for $20, and I've saved myself 10 bucks. Woo-hoo! And it lasts. Do you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense to you guys? Okay. All right. So I was very pleased with the responses, and I asked some general questions about contract negotiation. I asked them about the fact that they're hired by the commission for the commission, and that, you know, when they look at this, are they going to cover you, or are they going to look at whoever the litigant is and look at it fairly and openly? Because sometimes it's the sewer's wrong, sometimes it's the city that's wrong. How's that going to play out? So I was very satisfied with my answer there. Cobb &amp; Cole, same thing. Asked them the same questions. My concern there, of course, was the land development, as it was with everybody. And they said, you know, "We're going to stop land development," that Mr. Watts would abstain from any further, land development cases that are still pending with the city and his firm. I like their ethics. I like the fact that they talked about proactive. It is really close. I'll tell you that. I went for Cobb-Cole, just because I know Mr. Watts has been attending our meetings. I know he knows a lot about what's going on in this city, even if he's, because he sat here for time and time again. But I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a problem with the other group either. I would like to also see some firm numbers, some examples. Then I talked to Marcia, and I asked her some of my concerns with Marcia, where the number one was the fact that her address is still with Fowler &amp; Feeney. She says she didn't technically work for them. And I said, "Was it going to cost the city for you to change that information?" She told me it wasn't. I said, "Okay, what about, you know, legal aids? And what if you need some assistance from a different attorney? How are you going to do that?" "Oh, no, I can do it all by myself. I can do the issues. The only thing I won't do is labor law." And I'm like, "But I have genuine concerns about that. I don't think any one man or woman is an island, and as much as I would love to see a woman up there, I don't, I don't agree with that." You know, I asked her about some stuff, and so far as getting things done, and I'm running out of time, but Marcia, no. I'm sorry, Marcia, no.
Thank you.
Sarah Bryan, Deltona. I almost didn't speak, but I felt, as a young constituent, y'all should hear the young ideals. I attended Saturday's meeting. I think it was really, really, really stupid to give two days' notice. I work on Saturdays. I know most of people probably don't work on Saturdays. I thankfully had the day off. But to give two days' notice, and then on top of that, who wants to come to a city event on a Saturday, on probably their first day off? I wouldn't. When I get home on Tuesday nights from my work, I don't want to go anywhere on Wednesday. Who wants to do that? But enough about that. The other point I wanted to bring in is that I went to this meeting to listen, probably could have asked questions, but the questions that were asked from the constituents behind me were excellent, from what I heard. I went to listen, and I was intrigued by the answers that they had. Like Ms. Bryan just said, there is a reason why people want fresh ideas. They want new ideas. There's no reason to bring someone who's been here for so many years and has screwed us over so many times for no reason. I watch these meetings from home. I don't always show up, and I've only ever been to one meeting before. But I listen, and I'm concerned for the city, based on what I hear. I shouldn't be concerned as a citizen. You guys, when you guys are up there making decisions, you don't make decisions for you. You guys, no offense, are older. You guys make decisions for my generation, and I'm terrified for my generation, because it's not fair that you guys choose continuously, continuously, over and over again, to have the same people over and over again who have wronged us in the past. And I wish that someone was up there that heard us, because you guys don't. I know that some of you think that you do, but you don't. I'm sure your decision's already been made. And you know what's funny is I saw three of you there. Three of you! And all of you talked to every single person. But something tells me that even though you talked, you made up your mind right even before you got there. And the last thing I want to say is that, before you vote, I hope, I pray to God, that you let these people speak, because I heard it from one of you up there. You need to let these people speak. Give them one last chance to change your mind, even though it probably won't. Because at the end of the day, if one more person's mind can be changed, maybe we'll have a better vote. Maybe we'll have a better future. I doubt it, but it would be nice to see one day.
Hey, good evening again. To talk about the city attorney search that we've just undertaken, first of all, I wanted to express to the commission my appreciation to all of the candidates who were here this past Saturday. And I understand it was a pretty short notice for them, as it was for the public, so I appreciate them showing up. I had great conversations with all the applicants, so none of this is personal, it's purely professional. And again, I appreciate them spending part of their Saturday with me. So I want to just state that even though it may not be a requirement of an RFP or an RFQ or whatever acronym we're using to describe this, it's pretty typical for the applicants to appear at the meeting for which they may be awarded a substantial contract. So I understand that two of those applicants are here in the audience behind us, and so I applaud them for doing that. That's pretty customary. I've never been present at a meeting where an applicant who wasn't in the room, who was local, was then awarded a contract. So that would be shocking and news to me if that happened. I'm not saying it's unprecedented or has never happened before. I'm just saying in my experience that I have certainly never witnessed that. So another topic is experience. You know, there's experience, there's good experience, and then there's bad experience. And that's not a statement about any particular applicant, but we must weigh, when we talk about experience, if we're using whether it's 10 years or 20 years or whatever it is, we got to look at that experience and determine whether or not it was good, whether or not it was bad, not just looking purely at the numbers. There was one firm who applied whose proposal blew me away. And it blew me away because there was a total package there, because when you look at who we're hiring for this, you don't just look at what the person says in black and white and paper. You look at how everything was packaged and put together. You look at their demeanor when they're in the room with the public, and you take all that into account, because there is, you know, this is, we got some serious issues. We have serious issues in Deltona facing us now that are going to continue facing us in the future, and we need a firm who's able to handle that. And I can tell you right now, I may be shooting myself in the foot for this, but I wouldn't want to be in a courtroom with any of the applicants that are in the room right now. So that's all I have to say. Thanks so much.
Hi, Jennifer Madewell, Deltona. I emailed all of you after the workshop. Heard back from two of you. Thank you so much for responding. I'm in shock now. I believe Mr. Caldwell's my representative. If I remember correctly, there was no one running against him, or they dropped out or something, so we didn't actually get the vote. I'm probably going to say it probably won't happen again. I'm sure there will be somebody running against you next time. If not for anything else, for that motion right there, I just don't understand how you can put the person you just fired in your top three, and that went for six out of seven of you. I'm curious to know what emails y'all received that were in her favor, because nobody here spoke in her favor. I spoke with the other two firms. Both of them I'd be comfortable with, either one of them. They both had very good points in both their favors. That's all I have to say, is I just hope you listen to your residents. Thank you.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
All right. I believe there was a motion by Commissioner Caldwell, and then there is a second by Commissioner Burbank. If this motion fails, then I will be passing my gavel over to Vice Mayor Bradford. So can we please vote? We're going to go ahead and go to new business, consideration of appointments or reappointments Can we get a five-minute recess, please? Can we get a five-minute recess, please? Can we get the other commissioners up here so we can continue with scheduled business, please? All right, we're moving on to new business, consideration of appointments or reappointments of four members and possibly alternates to Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. Ms. Rafferty.
Every so many years, all boards have to change their members. Planning and zoning, because of the size of the board and because we don't want to stop from scratch, we split the boards in two. So some of them will expire in 2025, but now we have some who are expiring in 2023. The board, excuse me, the commissioners who have members getting ready to expire are Commissioner Vila Vasquez, Commissioner McCool, Commissioner Caldwell, and Commissioner Jody Lee. So we need you to appoint someone. The one person who cannot, is this the board? Cannot be reappointed is...
Buñoz.
Yeah, because he has termed out. You cannot serve more than three, I mean, two consecutive terms, which is six years.
Did we clarify if he can serve as an alternate?
Yes, he can, but he doesn't want to.
OK. I mean, it's not my choice, but...
Can we, Mr. Mayor, I'm making a request, or Madam Clerk, making a request to understand if a planning and zoning member is the expectation that in order to be appointed as a planning and zoning member, that they would have served as an alternate first? Has that been historical, or am I fuzzy on that? So they do not need to have served as an alternate first?
As a matter of fact, alternates just recently began, what, two years ago? Two years ago.
And that's just because they didn't have a consensus, you know, a board, a quorum. So they decided to have four alternates to get the quorum.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I move to confirm appointment of Rachel Amoroso. She is right now an alternate, and she would like, I think she filed an application, right, to the Planning and Zoning Board Advisory Board for a term expired of March 15, 2026. Now, since I am vacating an alternate, do I have to pick an alternate? Can I make a motion for an alternate, or does...
We'll finish this and then you can press.
Oh, OK.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Vila Vasquez and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. Commissioner McCool.
I was just going to have somebody else vote for me, so...
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
I'd like to make a motion to put in an alternate to replace Rachel Amoroso. I'd like to make a motion to appoint, let me see, Anna Vasquez as an alternate, if he accepts.
There's a motion by Vila Vasquez, Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Bradford. Can we vote, please? The motion passes seven to zero.
So now the other, sorry, Mayor.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
The other three is still Commissioner McCool, McCout, and myself.
Correct.
So we get to pick an active member and an alternate, or just...
Yes. In other words, if one of the people you pick to be the member is an alternate, then you have to pick that member and then the alternate.
I want to make a motion to put...
Wait a minute, excuse me, pardon me. I see my name next on the list here as far as going down the list, so I would like to go ahead and finish my turn here. I move to elect alternate Manny Rodriguez to move up as my appointment. And seeing that he is an alternate and moving up, that vacates a spot, and I would like to...
One motion at a time, Commissioner.
OK, go ahead.
So we have a motion by Commissioner McCool to, and a second by?
Jody Lee.
Commissioner Jody Lee. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCool.
Thank you. I would like to also proffer up for my alternate, Tara DiEirico, as alternate.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner McCool and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. The motion passes seven to zero. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call Commissioner Caldwell for his pick.
I motion to have Stoney Sixma continue.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Caldwell and then a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. Oh, Commissioner. Motion passes seven to zero. Finally, we're going to go to Commissioner Jody Lee.
I want to make a motion to keep Captain Ron Gonzalez.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Jody Lee and a second by Vice Mayor Bradford. Motion passes seven to zero. This time, we're going to move to comments on consent items. Do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. So consent agenda. The consent agenda contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If discussion is desired by any of the member of the city commission, that item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, all other matters included. Under the consent agenda will be approved by one motion. Citizens with concern should address those concerns. That part we covered. So at this time, we have Vice Mayor Bradford.
I move to accept consent agenda A, B, and C.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vila Vasquez. Please vote. The motion passes seven to zero. So we have now city commission special reports and requests. These are special reports and requests. And I will go down the line. I'll start with Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee.
Sorry. For my request, for one, before I get into, I'm going to say it, but I want to give kudos to the HR Director. She's been doing an awesome job, getting people processed with applications after I made comments before. You've been doing a great job, and all the department's head has said you're moving right along, so thank you for addressing whatever issues was, and I really appreciate it. The one consent item, I'd like to know if we can get, have the HR Director do a job fair. We have a lot of open positions in the city. A lot have been getting filled, but see if we can get consent between us so the HR Director can do a job fair for the open positions. I mean, Mr. Mark Manning from the park, I know he got with, he can do one for other businesses in town. So I'd like to see if we can make a consensus to have our HR Director do a job fair for our spots that are open in the city.
Specifically for city?
Yeah.
All right, let's do a simple vote. Just raise your hand if you're for it. So it's six to one.
No.
You want? Seven to zero. The motion passes, or the consents, the consensus passes. Any other?
No, that's it for right now.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez? None. Commissioner? No requests. Commissioner Burbank?
Thank you, sir. Yes, to hearken to something that Commissioner McCool said, I would love to have a shade meeting where the city attorney can sit down with all of us at one time and go over all the litigation currently in progress, status and potential outcomes, if that would be possible. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler? I don't think we can have a shade meeting on something like that, correct?
Well, you can have a shade meeting on the individual cases. So if you really wanted to have one, you'd have to have the meeting adjourned, have the meeting adjourned, have the meeting adjourned. Candidly, there isn't very much litigation. There are a couple of personnel issues that are pending, and unless you're interested in automobile accidents and things like that, there really, really isn't very much.
In that case, thank you, Mr. Fowler. I will withdraw that request.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner McCool?
Yes, I would like, from the city attorney, city manager, whoever's responsibility it is, in my inbox by Wednesday, I would like to understand what the ramifications are if a city commissioner steps down out of their seat with less than two years left to serve. So I would like that in my inbox. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
OK, these are just on a couple items that were brought up, Mr. Chisholm. I'm not sure if you caught them. I do think it's important that we go ahead and update, I don't know if you can even hear me, our comprehensive emergency plan. I don't know if that's something that you had already jot down, and if that's something that needs to be brought before us. Another thing that was brought up, and I thought, Joyce, it was already on the website, don't we have somewhere on the website all the boards, the vacancies and positions available? I don't know what we need to do to make that more readily available, because we did have somebody request that. Yeah, I know it's out there, but maybe it's just a little bit. There's a lot of information on our website, which can be a little tedious, but maybe let's make it a little bit more easy to obtain. And I don't know if we have her information, if we can maybe send her the links so that they have it. I would really appreciate that. And it's also come up several times about an audit. The city of Deltona has audits periodically. Is it twice a year, Mr. Chisholm?
We have an annual audit. In fact, they're finishing up on the annual audit, annual audit from last year, from October 1 of last year to October 1 of...
Twenty-two. Twenty-one to twenty-two, right?
Yeah, to October DC, twenty-two, yeah.
Right, OK.
So that audit, that is, they're in the final stages of putting it together, so we are audited, so...
Right, so we go through a very detailed audit by an outside firm every year. To do an audit at the magnitude that individuals are requesting again, which we did, I'm going to say two, three years ago, everybody was up in arms, they wanted to audit other water department, we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars just on that one department to find that the previous audit that we have done annually was correct.
And that's required by the state.
So to do an audit of the complete books, again, aside from the audit, the same audit we're having done right now, we're talking a million dollars plus, correct?
Yes.
OK. And I don't know anybody up here who's ready to pull a million extra dollars out, nor the residents probably wanting to have that. I, myself, you know, the audit we have is pretty substantial. Yes, but, Mr. Chisholm?
Annually, we have to audit the status of our pension plan, and that's done every year and part of the, if the... And that's done every year and part of the, if the fire department who has that pension plan, if they want something additional, they have to, you know, be prepared to put their funds into it for that purpose. But I'm not sure what the number is as far as the audit, but the cities, it is not uncommon for cities to have an unfunded liability in, particularly in pension plans. Because the reality of it is not, everybody's going to leave the pension plan on the same day, the same, same time. So you're, the likelihood of having some default in that regard is very, very small.
So you would not recommend us at this point doing an audit on top of an audit and spending additional million dollars?
They're already audited. I wouldn't do it again, no.
Okay. I think it was a great idea if we can maybe see about adding a resource on the website for bullying. I did notice that our fire department union was back there speaking with individuals as well. I don't know if that is something that our fire department and union can assist us with, but it is important that we do have that aspect covered. So I don't know if we can do something to get it on the website.
We're going to do something else that we haven't done. I can tell you when I get my nickel, I guess.
Okay. I believe we asked before, I don't know if you were here, it was brought up before and I think it was being investigated. There was citizens' response teams that were done, and I don't know how many years ago. And I've heard just rumors that one of the reasons that we do not have the CRT anymore was because of liability. I don't know if that's true. That's something that I would like to know. Hi, Chief.
Chief can tell you.
Didn't mean to interrupt you. Hi, Bill Snyder, Fire Chief. Yes, years ago, we did have a citizens' emergency response team or CERT team. We had it for several years and then it just kind of faded off due to lack of interest. There's a lot of training that goes into that, a lot of equipment that goes into it. And a lot of times what happens is, is people come and they train and they train and they train and they expect that, you know, they're going to be used. And then, you know, we don't have an event or something like that comes up and so then people tend to lose interest and that's kind of what happened with our team in the past.
And what's, what was the average cost on that CERT? I mean, I get it because, I mean, we can go a few years with no emergency. What was the average cost? I mean, because obviously it's probably an annual training as well, plus your classes.
Yeah, I don't really have, I don't really have a number in my head that I can give you. Basically, they were, they were given like personal protective equipment, like helmets and gloves and stuff like that, as well as fanny packs and stuff like that with equipment in it and that type of stuff. And then monthly, we would do training that the fire department would put on and do that monthly training with them. So it would be the personnel cost.
So there's a lot of resources involved with that.
With that type of stuff, yes.
I mean, that's a tough one. I don't know where everybody is on that one. You know, I guess why we're going to choose, I'm assuming we have a liability insurance that we have to have as well on all these individuals if we're sending them out in the midst of an emergency. So, I mean, I don't want them to think that, hey, we're not doing it just because we're not listening to them, but it sounds like there's a lot more involved than saying, hey, we're just going to start this group up and organization up. Yeah, yeah, please, chime in. I don't have a problem because this is new. This is something I'm not aware of.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question on that, Chief. Is that group used only when the cities declare an emergency or is it any other time?
I really wasn't in charge and involved with it back when we had it, so I don't know the actual parameters and stuff, but that's when it's usually used, is when we have some sort of emergency or like a hurricane or something like that, we would need to go out and maybe pass out food or in certain aspects, if it was catastrophic, then they would be out there helping us, you know, maybe with surface rescues and things like that, you know, on top of rubble piles and things like that. Helping provide first aid and things like that to the community and things like that in those types of disasters.
Right, and I remember I went to a training in Orlando. I think they were opening one up in Orange City. And it's a lot, it's a lot, because there's so much equipment that you have to be stored to be made available in case of an emergency. And if I remember correctly, it was only during hurricane or when the city is declared in a state of emergency. That's what, I mean, if we're talking about the same organization that-
That's my understanding of what they were supposed to be used, yes.
Because then we also have the citizens' group from the Volusia Sheriff's Office. So I don't know which one they were referring to.
This seems to me like it would be one of those items that because there is such an extravagant cost involving equipment, staff time, resources, that we would need a lot more information and input on this, you know? Is it beneficial to you guys? You know, do you need it, I guess is the question. So I'm going to throw that back on the city manager. This is something that I think you and the chief should probably work on, decide since he was there in the past or maybe even the union, to find out, is this something that we do need to have set up? Obviously, for, I just don't know. So I'm going to put that back on your lap.
Brief response, when we get into the reformatting, the emergency month, the emergency response program of the city, there is a place for volunteers to work with us during those events. And it's going to be, it's a very necessary part of what we would be doing. But we'll get you a formal proposal on how that works. So I'm not familiar with the existing plan. It appeared to be quite old from what I've heard, but it's something we do need updated.
Okay, thank you. And there's one more thing. And ma'am, I don't know if you caught it, if you were out there, but we do have on the website, and if you can leave your email, they're going to email you the link for all the boards and the vacancies and the openings. It was brought up as about sunshine violations. And I will tell you one thing that was brought up again during ethics training. A commissioner can do whatever and violate sunshine and continue to violate sunshine and it's not an ethics violation until it is reported to the Ethics Commission. So we can say that's sunshine, that's sunshine, but until something is actually reported to ethics, it's not considered an ethics violation or a sunshine violation. And that's just, I mean, there's nothing we can do. As a commission, I can't say, I want that person removed, that person removed, and that person removed. We don't have the authority to do that. I don't have the authority, and Mayor, I'm not saying this to you, I don't have the authority to say, Mr. Mayor, you just had a sunshine violation. She had one, she had, we don't have the authority to do that. The only person who has the authority to say there is an ethics violation is the Ethics Committee. So, you know, you guys, not you guys, we keep getting thrown at that we're in violation and she's in violation and he's in violation and that's a violation.
Report it. Report it.
Yeah, I don't know what to say. We can't say, yep, that's it and we don't, we don't have the authority to do anything, unfortunately. I just want to go through the list and make sure there's nothing left on the list. Can I, and I'll cover, I have a few things that I think will just be at the end, not so much here. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chisholm, I sent you a, I think it's some information from the city of Pensacola to see if we can look into some type of internship for our youth. I think it was sixteen to twenty-two-year-olds. Excuse me. Do we have one, Mr. Chisholm? Do we have an internship for our youth? Because I've asked and I've been told we don't.
I don't know if we have one in place or not, but it's something we can do. I don't think it takes an action on part of the commission to do it.
Yeah?
We have an internship program. We don't pay them. The organization that brings them in is run by Dr. Felicia Benzo. And they come, they've participated with us for two years already and they're just internship and it's for summer, only for summer.
Right.
And we don't pay them. The organization pays them and everything, they cover everything. We just, they just bring them here and the city assigns them where they can work for the summer. But if you want something full-time, then it's totally different.
No, so can we, can we somehow highlight that? Because I've gotten easily six or seven people, one or two employees even from here that have come up to me asking me and I've, when I've asked, I've been told we don't. So we should have that somewhere where it's readily available for everyone. So. And then number two, I spoke to you some time ago about an operational audit, which is completely different from anything financial.
Yeah.
And you told me that that would be something that we could look at, that it makes sense.
We can and it might make sense, just to be sure we're staffed in the right way-
Correct.
-for the city. And I'll see if I can find a proposal for that.
That way, we can bring it in front of the other commissioners to see if there's consensus on it. That way, we know if we're staffing the right people, if we have departments, and I'm pretty sure are short-staffed, we're paying them adequately. We need to make this city a little bit more progress thinking when it comes to our employees. And then the last thing is, I sent you today a, kind of a looking forward packet. Obviously, it's just one idea from the seven and I'd like to see if you can share that with my fellow commissioners so they see where my mind thought is and they can tear it down, cheer it up, whatever. I want to hear some, I want to hear some ideas from them as well.
Absolutely.
We need a vision. We, I don't feel like we have a vision and we need, no, that's, we need a, we need a vision for the city. And if there's one, I just, I haven't heard it. That's, that's that. City Attorney comments?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
It's your last time.
Well, actually, I got a few more days.
Well, for a commission, a commission meeting, city manager comments?
Ninety days, it takes me to the end of the month.
Just to carry on really with some of what you've already been talking about, one of the things that we're going to put into play is a citizens' academy, which is kind of putting thirty or thirty-five people in, that volunteer want to be a part of the academy. Then we take them through and introduce each department to them and they get a full briefing of what those departments are doing and the equipment they work with and get a better picture of what the city does in a normal day. And I've found that to be very successful in really people answering unanswered questions that sometimes they can't get just coming to a meeting because they really don't understand how much work really goes into the city. And it's, I think it'll be interesting for everybody, very educational for those that participate in that program. I think that's all I have today, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now I'm going to go to city commissioner comments. We'll start off with Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things that I caught also with a comment was about notification to the residents. I just want to let everybody know that there is on the website somewhere where you can go and register and you will receive an email from the city, an automatic email that goes out announcing events or emergencies and stuff like that. I don't remember exactly where on the website it is, but if you go in and put, register, put your email in there, you will get an automatic email every time the city of Deltona has something going on or emergencies. I just want to also congratulate the Deltona Little League. They did their opening on Saturday and Mayor, if you thought you were going to get away with this, you're not.
I was hoping I was going to get away with it.
For the second time, I beat the mayor in the pitch.
She did.
And then the other thing is, I want to, excuse me, give a shout out to the housing department. I was with them on Saturday. Five of our events that we had a stop by and they were taking surveys from the residents, you know, giving feedbacks and stuff from the residents. And I want you to know that a larger gym wasn't every application, but you'll see the applications when you, you know, when you, excuse me. And it was sad to see that while the game was being played in the gym, the basketball game, kids were all crowded at the entrance because even though we offered them to come to the area where we were and wait for their time, our time to play, they wanted to see the game. They wanted to see their friends playing. So I think that's something we should also look at. It should have been a request, but I just make it a comment right now.
It's okay.
Absolutely. Also, I just want to mention, if you're not, for the residents, if you're not picking up, this should be at the table. This is the manager's updates on what's going on in the city. I think it's pretty much up to date on what's going on. I love what was done in here about the CRA project and I look forward to our meeting. And also, I heard a comment about bringing directors to the meetings. We've done that before. I think it's once or twice a year. It's not at every meeting, but I think once or twice a year, the city manager brings the directors to give an update on the department. But also, an FYI, when I did my town hall meetings, I haven't done one yet, but when I did my town hall meetings, I invited two directors from every department to explain what that department was responsible for and the function of the department, you know, connecting with the residents. So just an FYI for anybody who also is planning to, to do their town hall meeting. And also, if your house needs repair, please come to the city. We are, you know, we have been looking to help people with their repair. If you qualify, the housing department is here to help you understand all the procedures and everything. So just look at the website, look for the information and it's out there. Okay? Thank you very much.
Commissioner Caldwell? Commissioner Jody Lee?
You didn't think we'd leave here without me saying that, did you?
Let me put on my glasses, apparently.
Okay, once again, well, I want to mention this one thing about this, Deltona Community Gardens. If anybody ain't been there, y'all need to go there. It's pretty cool. I ain't never been there. I went there one time, never been there before. Yeah, they got a little planting and all that stuff going on. It's pretty neat. I got a manager as low as going to donate a bunch of stuff for them. That place is pretty cool. If you ain't been in there, go in there. Everybody's growing their own stuff and I can't grow, I can't grow weeds, so. But, okay, besides that, they got a thing coming up on March 25th, some feed the bees thing, so y'all should go. It's a pretty cool little thing. Why are you laughing at me? I saw you over there. The other thing is, like I said, Rebecca, you're doing, thank you for all what you're doing. It's turning out, all the other employees, all the other departments, they're all noticing it quick and they're all loving it. Mr. Chisholm, thank you for all the stuff you're doing, all the employees in City Hall. I come here, as you know, I come here quite frequently in City Hall. Sorry, Joyce. But everybody seems to be laughing, smiling, enjoying. It's more upbeat than it used to be. You know, people say, oh, everybody's worried about getting fired. I think it's only Joyce that worries about that, but. Yeah, it is. See, I watched you sing the National Anthem, so.
Not talk about my neck, Joyce.
I watched her attempt and she just never even moved her lips. Yeah, I seen it. So, but like I said, the morale around the city is great. I think buying pizzas helps. You guys should try to catch on to that game because it worked pretty good for me. Ah, Chief, pizzas worked pretty good. But I just want to thank everybody. I mean, they were starting to come together. Mr. Chisholm, you've got all these projects going on. It's great to see all the different stuff. You know, I'm just happy that things are starting to move forward. You know, there's a couple of things tonight that I'm sure I'll be able to read all kinds of names. My mother won't call me on Facebook pretty soon, so it's all good. Other than that, it's all good.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Most of the stuff I covered, I'm going to echo. I just, I can't thank you enough for this. I mean, it's awesome coming in and seeing this manager's report. And I'm, just, since we have it, might as well bring it up. So, couple of cool dates. I'm guessing this is the SBA along with the Senator Deltona. They're doing a business workshop. Basically says, not sure how to turn your IDs into successful business. Sign up for a free business mentoring workshops with online expert resources. This is actually available in the city manager's packet. This is session one, March 14th from six, at 6:00 PM. I'm assuming these are on the website as well. Session two, April 11, 6:00 PM. Again, free workshop. Another wonderful event. Donate blood, City Deltona, Thursday, March 9. Guys, that's coming up. Vampires are going to be here waiting for you, nine to three. You get a $20 gift card at St. Patrick's-
a St. Patrick's Day t-shirt. Come on, we've got the St. Patrick's going on, and a wellness check, including blood pressure, pulse, temperature, iron count, and cholesterol screening. Free. Alls you got to do is show up, Thursday, nine to three. I don't think there's pizza, Jody. We got another thing, City of Deltona, spring flag football registration. Kids are about to be out of school. This is a great way to keep your kids active during the summer. Sign them up for all of our wonderful programs. Ages six to fourteen, deadline, April 21st. Season starts May 6. Practice one hour a week, Wednesday and Friday. Game day, Saturdays. Fee is $50. Please, again, go on the website, look this information up. Let's get your kids signed up, registered, and let's get them, you know, give them something to do.
We need coaches.
Oh, we need coaches. Like, right there, we've got a wonderful young man with a lot of energy that would look great in a coach's uniform. Got it? We know, Mr. Villa, your arm is not that good, so we're going to let you get away with this one.
I'm never going to let that down.
Nope.
I think...
Kids' summer camp registration, one day only. This is a first come, first served, March 25th, 10 to 2. It's got the skating week, walking session. This is going to be at West Cryle Park. Again, I'm assuming all these are going to be on our website. But again, let's get our kids active this summer. Let's get them registered for all these wonderful programs. Hopefully, I'm done soon. March 18th, pause in the park. City Deltona residents get free microchips, low-cost vaccines, rabies shots, and animal tags. There is zero excuses on why we do not have the animals taken care of. You can't say you couldn't afford it because, free microchips. So, that's what I have. So, these are all in the city manager's packet in the back, along with wonderful information on some items that are going on. Last week's, if you didn't get it, also had a list of all the activities that I'm sure Mr. Chisholm will have available. Thank you again for keeping us informed. That's all I have for the week.
Thank you. Mayor's fitness challenge. This is a great event that's happening with our community. We had a huge sign up. I have to say, here in public, the mayor of Miami kind of was showing off with his forty people. We had 147 that signed up. So, hey, City of Deltona got more people than Miami. So, show up for three, three times a week. We have a lot of fun. Believe it or not, we don't talk politics. We talk about how the mayor needs to lose more and more weight, and everybody wants to be my coach. That's the reason why my hand was so bad that day, by the way. I'm sticking to that.
Wah, wah, wah.
Hey, the week prior, there was a good throw. She still did it better than me, but it was still a good throw.
She practiced on your hand.
Probably. Mr. Chisholm, I am, I am now pleading. I am still not getting my biweekly report of the projects that are coming towards the city, the informa, I really need that. I want to know. I've asked now seven times. So that's not, I'm not even putting it as a request. I'm putting it as a commissioner comment. I'm asking for the, the projects that we have in our pipeline. I'd like a biweekly report. I'm still not getting it. And I've asked Marcia for it as well. I've asked you. I just, I want to know what we have going on in our city. And I've also requested that all the commissioners get the same request that I get, obviously.
Everybody would get the same thing, I can tell you. But let me ask you all to be sure I clearly understand this. You're talking about projects that are in the pipeline to, that somebody's made a request to get a permit for a RV park or whatever it is. Is that what you're talking about?
Any project of any type of development that's coming to the city.
That's okay. We can do that.
Can I, can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
I think what he's asking for, some of these projects may be protected under Florida state statutes.
Some are.
Because I, and I don't know, that's an education thing for everybody to understand. There are certain projects that if they sign that, we can't violate Florida state statutes. And even if them saying, hey, just sign this, it makes it very difficult. So legally wise, I, I would love to know too, because, I mean, we get asked all the time. But I have been told that because XYZ company has signed, that we are not able to get that information.
So specifically, I'm asking about the ones that don't, because obviously, we have a project right in front of Amazon, that we can all speculate all day what it is or isn't. I mean, I get that. That stuff I get. But there's other projects that we have that I still...
Like, what, what does not have, yeah, because we could ask all the time, especially like, what's going around. I mean, movie theater, so...
Some of the, some of the, as she indicated, we really can't tell you, because sometimes we don't even know who it is. You know, they'll, they'll, they'll build a building, but we don't know who's going to go in the building. And...
But we know what's going in there.
We know the building's there, because it's, you can see it. But you can't, I mean, we, we really don't know who the occupant's going to be in some cases. So it's, I can tell you some things are going on in different areas, but I can't tell you what they are in every case, because we don't know. And that's what she's speaking about. Some of those are, some cases might be speculation on the part of the property owner. Some of it may be a outside company that's wanting to get everything built and approved before they disclose that they're going to be moving here, because it would impact the employees they have employed somewhere else that may not know they're going to move, they're going to move the business to Florida, which happens quite a bit. So it just depends on the circumstance. We'll, we'll let you know the things that we can tell you about.
It helps me some.
It helps me sometimes to look what's coming up to the Development Review Committee, because if they come that far, then it has become public record.
Thank you. I have a town hall coming up next week, just the rest of the residents know. And that's it. So, the meeting's adjourned.